And at this time, if you would, please stand for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Timothy Robinson from Central Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you. Thank you so much, Mayor Wright and city council members, for allowing me to have prayer before we start this meeting here tonight. Let's pray. God in heaven, we are so thankful to come before your presence. We understand your goodness and how much we love you, and we ask God your blessings upon this meeting here tonight. We ask God that you would bless these council members and their families, and we ask that you would watch over them. We are told in the scriptures to pray for our leaders. So tonight, we pray for our President, President Obama, and Vice President Biden, and those in our state who lead us. God, I pray that you would bless this meeting. Lord, for those who are here tonight, we ask your blessings upon them. We know there's a lot to be discussed here tonight. Lord, I pray that you give the council wisdom and give them understanding. Give the city of Portsmouth, the citizens, also wisdom and understanding. And where there can be a win-win situation, we'll give you all the praise and glory. And we understand sometimes that's not the event. But, Lord, help us and help these council members to do the right thing and what is truthful, and help the citizens of Portsmouth to accept it, understanding that we always don't get our way all the time. But we do know all things work together for good to them who are called of God, called according to his purpose. So we're going to trust in you, whatever happens. And at the end of the evening, we go home, the sun's going to come up tomorrow, and it's going to be a good day. Thank you for loving us. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for all that you've done for us. In your most blessed and holy name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for its sake.
Members of council, will you please indicate your presence electronically?
Six members of city council are present.
Okay, very good. Members of city council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of October 22, 2012, a call meeting of October 23, 2012, and a call meeting of November 2, 2012. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Move adoption?
Second. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Okay.
The minutes are adopted six zero.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will notice a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will see a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you please conclude your remarks at that time. Public hearing, 12-439, Public Hearing on Housing Use Permits, Group Housing Project, excuse me, Permit and Use Permit Applications. Members of council, for items A, B, and C, A, B, C, and D, A, B, and C, right, okay. We will read all three of those items. You will handle each one individually.
Okay.
Item A, HPO 703A, Downtown Ann Bolin, Authorized Agent for the Virginia Housing Department Development Authority, requests modifications to the housing use permit, resolution number R 0719, granted April 24, 2007. The property is located at 719 High Street and 710 King Street, and is zoned downtown D1-T5. The property is further described as Tax Map 25, Parcels 4 and 19. The comprehensive plan recommends downtown mixed-use development, vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Item B, GHP 0602A, Downtown Ann Bolin, Authorized Agent for the Virginia Housing Development Authority, requests modifications to a group housing use permit, resolution number R 0618, granted April 11, 2006. The property is located at 723 and 725 High Street and 714 King Street, and is zoned downtown D1-T5. The comprehensive plan recommends downtown mixed-use development, vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Item C, HPO 801A, Downtown Ann Bolin, Authorized Agent for the Virginia Housing Development Authority, requests modifications to a housing use permit, resolution number R 0824, granted June 10, 2008. The property is located at 739 High Street and is zoned downtown D1-T5. The comprehensive plan recommends downtown mixed-use development, vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Mr. Brusso?
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of city council, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Fred Brusso. The three items that you've just heard read on your agenda now, while initially granted at different times, basically concern the same development known as Montgomery Square, which is located along the south side of the 700 block of High Street. As Ms. White indicated, we'd like to make one presentation as the complex works together as one site.
Very good.
You have HPO 703A, which was the second use permit granted, but it's on the east side of the building. GHP 0602 is the center part of the building. HPO 801 is the end unit located on the corner of Effingham and High Street. As indicated, three housing use permits were granted between 2006 and 2008 to allow the development of Montgomery Square. These three use permits, as we've indicated, dealt with three different properties at that time, however, one developer has completed the development. These three use permits were developed prior to the development of the Downtown Design Guidelines Manual, the Downtown Master Plan, and Waterfront Strategy, and of the current zoning ordinance. From 1991 to 2010, the zoning ordinance then required developers of residential projects containing more than one multifamily dwelling unit and/or attached townhome developments to obtain a housing use permit before construction permits could be issued. On January 1, 2010, this requirement was eliminated in the downtown and uptown portions of the city, and on May 1, 2010, this requirement was eliminated citywide for all multifamily and/or attached townhome developments. However, those locations that had obtained a housing use permit under the previous regulations are required to adhere to the conditions imposed unless one of three conditions are met. First, the conditions are altered through the public hearing process such as tonight. Or two, the land is vacant for a period greater than two years. Or finally, three, the use of the property is changed to another permitted use. When the regulations for the downtown area became effective in January of 2010, ahead of the full zoning ordinance, the requirements, as we indicated, for the group housing or housing use permits were eliminated. Today, this development would be considered a by right development and would be permitted without the public hearing process. In late 2011, the property was foreclosed on, and the note holder, Virginia Housing Development Authority, or VHDA, became the new property owner. VHDA requires greater flexibility not currently permitted by the current housing use permit conditions as they move forward to complete development of the remaining vacant building areas. Therefore, VHDA is requested to eliminate the housing use permit conditions associated with these three housing use permits. This slide shows a portion of the electronic zoning map for the easternmost parcel of the land known as 719 and 710 King Street. This use permit was granted in April of 2007. This slide shows a section of the Montgomery development that currently contains 17 multifamily residential units and commercial floor space on the first floor. The slide shows the center portion, excuse me, of the development, and on the electronic zoning map, you can see it is in, again, the T5 Downtown Zoning District. This use permit was granted in 2006. This section of the building contains 28 multifamily residential units and commercial floor space. This slide shows the final section of the building, and you can see on the electronic map, it is also zoned T5, and it is known as the 739 High Street area. This part of the development contains 42 multifamily residences. In each of the, in the staff report, staff has included a copy of the resolution granted for each location, and within the staff report are listings of the conditions imposed at the time the approval of city council was given. In reviewing the list of conditions for each housing use permit, staff finds three conditions that are shown on the screen now should remain. These deal with the responsibility for upgrading utilities, trash handling, and the paying of all taxes and fees associated with the development. To assist city council, staff has prepared the following slide that generally describes the conditions that will be removed. First, you'll see it's elimination of the unit counts from the housing use permits. Second, the elimination of references to parking by standard and handicap. Third, the elimination of adherence to proposed floor plans. And finally, elimination of adherence to site plans submitted. Around the three properties, the surrounding land is developed with a combination industrial to the northeast, which is the CMP automatic switching facility. It's the slide on the top. To the north and west are commercial operations. To the east is vacant land, and to the south is a surface parking lot used for the apartments and the public. For the reasons presented in this presentation and the staff report, staff finds that the adoption of current regulations, housing use permits are no longer required. Since these use permits were approved, however, the required conditions can only be modified by city council action. Therefore, staff and the planning commission recommends the approval of the modifications of each use permit with the three conditions we have listed therein. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Okay. Any questions, council? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Very good.
Our first speaker is Ms. Ann Bolin.
My name is Ann Bolin. I'm a Senior Development Officer at Virginia Housing Development Authority. I'm here to ask city council to approve our three zoning requests to eliminate or remove the special use permit conditions currently in place that affect our plans for the additional redevelopment of the Montgomery Square development at the corner of High and Effingham Streets. The majority of the property was a department store with adjoining retail storefronts, and for the last 20 years stood underutilized or vacant. In 2007, a developer came to VHDA with a vision of a mixed-use project of 69 apartments and approximately 40,000 square feet of retail use on the first floor. VHDA provided financing and regrettably had to foreclose earlier this year after the ownership entity could no longer meet its obligations under the deed of trust. Due in large part to the economic downturn, the developer was unable to lease the first floor commercial space to quality tenants. The resulting vacancy was directly responsible for the developer filing for bankruptcy and eventually VHDA foreclosing on the property. We believe that it is important for council and the city to realize that under VHDA's ownership as an independent political subdivision, no real estate taxes are paid on the property. Our goal is to invest in the property and reposition it. We want to return this property to private ownership. We have evaluated many options for the property. We reviewed approximately nine offers of interest from prospective commercial tenants that were negotiating with the prior owner, but none would commit to this location. We received some current inquiries suggesting they might be willing to pay us approximately $8 a square foot in income. As comparison, the apartment units return a little more than twice that amount of income. We evaluated the High Street commercial corridor from Chestnut Street to the water and counted approximately 29 unleased or unoccupied commercial spaces. And in your handout I have here, you can see everything in red was identified as vacant or unoccupied, and those are commercial spaces on High Street. Thank you so much. We've had many conversations with city planning, zoning, and housing staff who agreed attracting more tenants with higher discretionary incomes would better support the recovery of the downtown district. Our current rents range from $1,000 to $2,000 per month. Ladies and gentlemen, VHDA is obviously trying to recoup our investment into this property and return it to private ownership as quickly as possible. We are also intent on bolstering the city's redevelopment efforts in the downtown area. We have had strong leasing activity for the existing 69 apartment units and are currently 97% leased. For efficient operation, multifamily property investors look for properties with at least 100 units. Our renovation plan would convert Montgomery Square to a 104-unit property. Our development plan includes investing in additional $3 million into the property to result in 36 more apartments located on the first floor. We would lose one unit on the second floor to provide an interior trash chute to a new compactor. We would move the leasing office to be centrally located to Effingham and High Streets and create 16 units along the Effingham and High Street exterior wall, which could possibly transition to future office space should future demand be warranted. We would add 13 interior parking spaces, multiple bike racks, and an enhanced fitness center. We will be also creating an outdoor atrium with green space for the exclusive use of our residents. These new units will be furnished with the same level as the existing apartments, and we plan to use the original architect to ensure a homogeneous design. As part of the planning approval process, we will be subdividing the interior lot lines to create one unified parcel that includes, as a condition, the parking lot located between County and King Street. We ask city council to approve our three zoning requests to eliminate the current special use conditions and allow us to be treated as any developer of an existing building in the downtown Portsmouth area would be treated today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me ask the question, if I could. What is your timeframe for getting this underway if approved tonight?
If approved tonight, I think we have to come back one more time.
One more read.
Yes, sir. And then we would go ahead and pull the plug and authorize the architects to start drawing. So conceivably, once the architects have finished the drawings, we can bid it out to construction companies, and the hope would be we could probably be under construction by March, April, and hopefully done by this time next year. That would be what we would like to do.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
You got to talk to Tony Goodwin.
Huh?
You got to talk to Tony Goodwin.
Oh, you want to speak after Tony Goodwin?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mr. Tony Goodwin.
City council members, deputy city manager, as well as Mr. Oakesman. I've come to you this evening to express my departed concern over the request for this use permit to be changed to more multifamily than actually commercial. And the reason I do so is because the High Street corridor, which of course was developed with its width and its size and its length up to Chestnut Street, which historically was the town boundaries established back in 1752, which of course gives us a very unique historic district. It straddles or crosses one of the most busiest, or the busiest intersections in downtown Portsmouth, and that being High and Effingham Street. High Street, of course, going east from Effingham Street sees about 6,000 to 7,000 cars a day. High Street going west from Effingham Street sees about 12,000 cars a day, double that. And then Effingham, north and south, sees about 35,000 to 38,000 cars per day. One of the things that I'd like to point out to you tonight is that the downtown historic district on the National Registry Number 03001485, also known as 12-5063, is the High Street Corridor Historic District, established back in 2004. 970 acres, 229 buildings, four structures in one object were accounted, roughly bounded by I-264 to the south, Middle Street to the east, Primrose Street, which is three blocks west of Effingham, to the west, and Queen Street to the north, which obviously bounds the historic district of Old Town. The historic significance was architecture and engineering, and period significance ranges from as far back as 1750 all the way up to 1974. That being said, the historic function, as it is described on the National Historic Registry, is commerce, trade, domestic, funeral business, government, recreation, and culture, religion, and transportation. Historic sub-function consists of business cemetery, city hall, rail-related religious structure, single-dwelling housing, and theater. With that being said, historic photos from the 1940s and 1920s shows High Street was a vibrant city, was a vibrant downtown, and that we aim to bring that back. Not only do I have a personal felt interest in this, but I also sit as your Old Town Business Association president and feel as if that drawing this line in the sand at Green Street and saying no more commercial beyond here pretty much cuts us off at the knees with any other expectations to grow a retail or business corridor along that historic street. I'd like to point out a couple of things that have been said to you tonight, and that is, of course, the many consultants that we've paid for the last 20 some odd years, either it be ULI, your Urban Land Institute, or UDA, which is Mr. Gendros, and then the last consultant that really came together with our Downtown Design Guidelines here in 2010, which their name, Kimley Horn, is their company, all focus on development of the High Street corridor as a business corridor. Specifically, UDA, back in 2006, highlighted that the High and Effingham Corridor Study is a document of the city of Portsmouth contracted by UDA, and this study, which was completed in 2006, strive to provide framework for potential positive change in increased livability while honoring the city's rich heritage and physical character. The study influenced, like the High and Effingham Corridor Study, the Downtown Master Plan, and Waterfront Strategy, and curled residential development as a key to supporting High Street retailers. And where else to have High Street retailers but on the first floor? Another, obviously, ULI document saying better retail offerings increase downtown population. The downtown population, we do agree, is needing to be grown to a point where we need, obviously, feet on the street. But to add in also the last economic impact or headwind, taking in a headwind, even our economic development says along High Street and the intersecting roads, retail business and small professional office users continue to make investments, and that is true today. And I do believe I have three more opportunities, or two more opportunities to step up.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Whitehurst?
Thank you, Mayor. What you have before you is a very good short-term solution, but it's not going to make Portsmouth what it should be in the long term. Mr. Goodman, produce all the information about the studies that we've had, people saying this is a great idea for mixed use. It's not going to work when you cut your knees off. What we need to do is to provide some help to the businesses downtown. We sort of took the heart out of them when we got rid of the tourist bureau. We need to put that back, have people on the streets, get people to come to Portsmouth to look at the historic areas we have. We have six of them, various historic communities, also a military town. We've come up with some way of showcasing the things that we have as military. We're just not doing a good job of promoting the city to get feet on the street as we take a longer period of time to do economic development. I'm going to vote against it because I think having businesses on the first floor is the way to do it. The other cities that are trying to mimic what we are, we have it. We don't want to give it up. I think it's the wrong way to go in the short term. We need to make sure that we're providing the kind of help for the businesses of putting maybe four or five people on the street as tourist bureau to do what they've been doing for many, many more years until we got sort of greedy and asked the city manager to cut some things out of the budget, and he cut that out, the wrong thing to cut out. I'll vote against it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Goodwin. Has the OTBA taken an official position on this?
Yes, sir. In our monthly meeting of October, we were in favor of opposing taking away the possibility of High Street frontage, retail space, or office space along the High Street, specifically the High Street corridor. Effingham Street, King Street, different ballgame, and can understand and live with that. But as far as High Street is concerned, we feel like that's a very strong viable corner that we need to maintain.
I tend to agree. I can certainly appreciate VHDA wanting to recoup their investment, and I do think in short term, obviously, we need feet on the street. Everybody's in agreement. I've certainly spoke to that point. But I still hate to see our most visible corner that has a proven past record of retail business taken over, closed up for apartments. You know, we decide things on the highest and best use. I just, I have concerns that this meets that standard in the long term. If we are still working to bring retail back on High Street, which we are, and I think it's still a possibility, I would rather see retail, some shape or form, go into that location. There are those of us around who remember the days where we went to Bloomberg's, I believe it was, and saw Santa Claus there. Santa Claus is long gone, but I do feel that we can get retail back in that facility in some shape or form. So I'm going to oppose this based on I don't think it's a good long-term solution for Portsmouth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brusso, just briefly, the planning commission and the staff has recommended approval for this. How much discussion and dialogue did we have along these same lines? My concern here is I agree with what they're saying, both of these, as well as the speaker there, but we've been at this now over 10 years, and there are just no takers. And to continue to, go ahead.
Ms. Mayor, I have to agree with you. There was quite a bit of discussion at this during the planning commission public hearing. I think if you look back I think if you look back at history, it's been something a little bit longer than 10 years, as Ms. Olin had indicated, closer to 20 years. One of the key features in the discussion, I believe, at the Planning Commission was that if this was the only commercial property vacant, the answer would be no. Don't do it. But with the preponderance of vacant properties that exist along High Street, especially to have a vacant property at its key intersection, we need to do something and prepare it so that it then becomes an attraction rather than a deterrent to people coming into the city. One of the concerns we had was that initially, they were not looking at having the units along the exterior wall to be, so that they could be converted if market conditions were present. What they've presented now with the 16 units is actually, they could be converted fairly easily to an office or a small retail space when the market does come back into the area. And it was with those discussion points, the Planning Commission agreed with the staff that this should be, an item that should move forward.
Do we have any idea how much real estate taxes that we're not getting as a result of this now being back in their hands? Do we know that figure?
I do not have that right now, sir.
Okay. And as long as it's in the hands of the state, we will not receive any?
That's correct, sir.
Taxes, okay. Thank you. Ms. Randall?
Thank you so very much. One of the things I was thinking about, the markability of that area and how vibrant it was when it was in its prime, and we've noticed the fact that quite a few things have changed in that area, but that's one of the pivotal points in our city when we come off of the tunnel, which happens to exit and enters through that, and also crucial to the connections through to the Naval Hospital all the way back in that area there. This was one of the highlights of the city. I was much younger, or older, whichever way, less gray hair back during that time. But that was a busy corridor because we used to do a lot of walking through that area because of the shopping areas, and they had apartments and things over some of those areas there. The way it looks now, we definitely need to do something with it because it's a part of visibility in coming into the city as well as exiting our city. So I feel as if some way we ought to be able to combine the two ideas with the markability of some of the apartments, like they are doing in some of the other cities, the apartments over the buildings, the businesses, and still keeping the walkability for the citizens to use. I think we need to look at it because this is a very important corridor historically to a lot of what has happened within our city. When we look back at the churches of the early times that we had, I'm not that old, but I'm just telling you what I was told, and we look at, I see some faces smiling because they remember what it was like, too. And we look at the recreational facilities through there. I think those are things that make the city unique. I don't think we need to take away a lot of that history, but try to bring it back where we bring the people back in the heart of the areas that many of these people grew up in. And many of your historical churches are located in that corridor. And I would hope that we do something with it other than shut it down, where people can no longer walk through it and let the children understand what the history of our city was all about. We used to take the children through the schools and walk and look through these areas. There's a lot of history in there. So I would say preserve it and bring it back to an area where it can be meaningful, not only for the generations going forward, but as a reflection of what our history was all about.
Thank you. Now, the, one more question on the plans here, maybe you or Ms. Bolden can answer. The apartments here along High Street are convertible. If the market did come back, we could convert those back to office space. Is that what you just said?
Yes, sir. I had a, I was kind of running short on time, but...
Okay.
Mr. Goodman, you can be seated.
Yeah.
We need to see it.
You don't have to do this.
All right. The way the architect designed this, and so you understand, right now there are apartments on the second, third, and fourth floor of the building.
Correct.
So this is the 40,000 square feet currently on the first floor of the building, okay? And our redesign would be, this is High, this is Effingham, this is High Street, and these units could easily, you know, you've got the entrance in, you could convert those into, you know, doctors', you know, a little doctor's office or lawyer's office or something like that if there was a demand. Right now, we're seeing nothing but vacant commercial space up and down, and we can't get any traction on good quality tenants. So this seemed like a very good use. We're making sure that we've got the entrance off High Street and on Effingham, so our leasing office has been moved up to the front here to be centrally located, and we have the nice gym. Then this atrium here is an open atrium, and it's just beautiful inside the building. So, you know, we, the exterior is not changing any, it's interior corridors. It's just that we're going to hopefully put feet on the street for you all and give you some flexibility down the road.
And Fred, none of those are load-bearing walls, so they could easily be removed if the market did come back?
Right here, right. Yes, sir.
They could.
Okay. All right. Mr. Whitehurst?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I still believe we've not done our part as a city. What we did was to cut the heart out by doing away with the visitors' bureau. It was working. We decided to let the city manager recommend, and we approved, taking those people away so we don't get people coming from Richmond or Chicago, spending day trips here, bringing money here, and going home. We need to try that again. That's what people are asking for, and what we ought to do, get a visitors' bureau, get people from Chicago or someplace that want to come to Portsmouth, want to see the corners of houses, want to go to historic districts, want to see some of the military, we can do it all here, right in Portsmouth.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Makes it sound easy that these things can be converted back, you know, to a doctor's office or some special use. I guess the question would be, at what price and on whose dime? VHDA?
We want to return this... No. He wore it comes to the door. Sir, we want to return this to private ownership so that you all can get tax dollars on it.
That's my point.
That is a goal for us.
Right.
And in order for us to attract an investor to buy the property, all of our research shows it's got to be at least 100 units of income-producing.
Sure.
Right now, 50, you know, I've got 40,000 square feet that turn zero income.
Yeah. My point, my point being, you're spending $3 million to convert it to apartments, and to undo that, it's going to be an expense that I take it that we don't know exactly what it would be. It would depend on the type of business that was going there.
But that would be market-driven, though, right? I mean...
And that may not be compatible with the other apartments that would still be in the unit. My point is, you know, that process is not as easily converted as I think what we're seeing.
Well, there'd have to be the demand for the conversion, sir.
Sure.
And if there was a demand for the conversion, it's my understanding it'd have to come through city for the permits and everything to...
Understand.
To take care of that.
Thanks.
Mr. Hurst?
Mayor members, thank you. Most of us know the former developers of this property who struggled for years to try to find a commercial tenant for that space. It was kind of heartbreaking for us because these developers spent a lot of their time and a lot of their money helping to redevelop High Street to what it is today, and they spent tens of thousands of dollars trying to find commercial tenants for that space and could not do it. And ultimately, that's why this property went into foreclosure. You know, it seems to me that the choice we have is to fill up those empty windows, which I think are an embarrassment to the city for those of us who travel on Effingham Street every day, and getting this property on the tax rolls. I mean, to me, there is no choice. If this is the only use that conceivably and economically we can discern, then I think we have to, you know, approve this, let VHDA do what it knows how to do, and put this property back on the tax rolls as fast as we possibly can. Given the significant amount of other vacant commercial space on High Street, seems to me that we have to go with the best alternative we have, and frankly, sitting on this property for another 10 years, I don't think is an option.
We need income.
Okay. Any other discussion? Mr. Scher, you got it? Okay. All right.
Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item HP 0703A. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item HP 0703A.
Good evening. My name's Bill Devers, 4540 Hatton Point Road. I wasn't planning on speaking, but as a member of the Planning Commission, I thought maybe I should explain our vote, which was seven to nothing in favor of this. And basically, it just comes down to one thing, vacancy. You've got to fill this up. It's got to be filled up. 10 years of failure can't be allowed to continue. We need to do something to get motivation downtown. And if any realtor thinks this is a great place for a commercial place, I'm sure that the young lady would gladly lease it to them right now, tomorrow, give it to them. But there's no realtor stepping forward, and there hasn't been. And this is our corridor. This is what people see when they pull into our town and drive downtown. It's important to fill this block up, and for that reason, we voted seven to nothing, and it was unanimous, and we did have quite a bit of discussion on it, but it all came down to vacancy, vacancy. You turn this over to, basically, it's going to be studio apartments and one-bedroom apartments. You're still going to have tens of thousands of vacant space downtown for commercial realty. And maybe you get more people downtown in these apartments, you get those other places filled up. And that was basically what our decision was based upon. I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up and sharing that with us. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the insight, too. I guess my deal is, if one of the corner that is, contains more traffic than probably any other street in the city, if we are willing to throw the towel in and saying that we cannot find a commercial business to go in there, to me, that signals there's not much hope for what's in between, the remainder of High Street. I hate to say it. You know, if we can't market that piece and find a business that would love to have that kind of visibility on that busy corridor, Lord knows, I don't see how we're going to find businesses for the other vacant businesses on High Street. Perhaps it's a signal we need to rethink the whole thing, but I just hate to throw the towel in. I know it's been vacant for a long time. I appreciate the fact that, you know, the state agency wants to recoup its investment. There's nothing wrong with that, but we need, certainly need, tax money, but I just hate throwing the towel in on a potential commercial business at that busy intersection.
All right. Any other discussion?
We have a speaker coming.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. The question is, to me, is we're not getting no tax money, real estate, or property tax now, correct?
Right.
All right. So we're not getting no real estate tax. If they turn these back into apartments, they still have to sell the whole property. So I don't see no gain in either way. You know, I don't see us gaining, because now you've got a whole apartment complex to sell. At least the bottom, if the realtor found a retail person to come in, they at least have the opportunity to sell that one piece. With the market the way it is, I don't see a lot of investors going out buying whole apartment buildings. So, I mean, you really need to look at the gain, just because you're giving them this use tonight to put more apartments, you're not gaining nothing. Because all they're doing is still leasing. It's the benefit to them, but not to, not to the city. Do y'all follow what I'm saying? And I think that's...
I think the point she was making, though, Mr. Meeks, is the markability of it, the market is saying, without those 100 apartments, you're not going to get that investor to come in and do that. So do you, it's a chicken-and-egg thing. Do you let it set for another 10 or 15 years?
Right.
Wanting to accomplish what we'd all like, or do you try to do something to spur that whole piece? And if you look at it from a corridor perspective, from Effingham all the way to the waterfront, that's the whole purpose of our whole downtown waterfront strategy with the jail and all of that, bringing apartments and people downtown to be able to absorb all these other vacancies. So if you never start it, you're never going to get it done. So it's a chicken-and-egg thing, I think, is what the dilemma that we're looking at, and I think that's what the Planning Commission said, that they discussed in great detail and voted 7-0 to go ahead and approve it.
13 or $14 million, and now they're going to add more apartments, another $3 million. So that's going to be a $17 million investment. It's going to be hard to get a, I mean, an Arlington property, a breed, to come in here and spend that kind of money with no retail. Right now, when you go into a mixed use, a lot of your apartments, just like we did approve Dan Aston's piece, we're mandatory, I mean, we're putting mandatories on realis, I mean, on retail, retail space with apartments. So you're only two blocks away, and you're changing it. You're saying, all right, well, we want this here, but over here, sorry, we just put apartments all the way to the ground. We've got to have some kind of unit.
Consistency.
Yeah. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Good night. Okay. Ms. Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. My question for Ms. Bowlen, if she could come back to the mic.
Yes, ma'am. Getting your money's worth tonight, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
That's good, though.
Ms. Bowlen, your request, is it based on any, well, I know you've done some research, but do you have some possible clients or purchasers that you, this request is based on, strictly your research, that retailers not coming in apartments or what the demand is for now?
The research on the commercial piece was based on a lookback of what the prior developer and the efforts he made, and then the retail that had reached out to us that didn't want to pay anything hardly for the space. I mean, you just couldn't justify letting that space go that cheap and maintain any type of value for the property. Now, my job at VHDA, and I've been there 25 years, is to manage the real estate-owned portfolio for multifamily. So what I do is, when we foreclose on a multifamily apartment project, my job is to take it in, reposition it, redevelop it, do whatever, and return it to the private sector so that wherever locality it's located in can recognize tax dollars again. And I have sold, since 2007, 16 of our properties in this way. I have a roll of 370 developers that are on my email distribution list anytime I have a property available for sale, and it's a bid process. I just got eight bids on a property I was selling in Virginia Beach, all strong bids. So, I mean, I think we are good at evaluating the properties and trying to figure out how to reposition it and, you know, mitigate VHDA's loss, but also create a win for the locality.
You're betting $3 million on that, right? Additional $3 million. So you're betting additional $3 million on being able to do that?
I'm betting another $3 million to not lose as much as I would lose today if I sold it with 40,000 square feet of vacant, unimproved commercial space. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
One more quick question. One more quick question. Since you've had sixteen properties to date since the downturn in '07, that you've taken over and done the same thing that you're suggesting here?
Yes, sir.
So, you have a record of being able to do. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. See y'all's eyes getting big when I walk up here? We can make it a jail.
I tell you what we could do.
Yes, sir.
But what we could do, I mean, we can't see the forest for the trees, okay? You've got all that vacant property downstairs. You're looking for one major investor to come in. It's not going to happen, because taxes are too high, okay? We put ourselves in a hole. What we need to do is like they did over in Ghent. You got an apartment building, they brought in a mini-farm fresh downstairs, they got a tanning salon, they got hair salon, all kinds, all kinds of stuff they can put in there where you don't even have to leave the apartment. You can get whatever you want. So, once you subdivide it and get a multitude of businesses to come in, like a mini-mall, it'd be the perfect thing to do. You don't have to look for one major investor to come in there. I think everybody would be happy with that situation. It would be commercial storefront on the bottom floor and apartments above. It's not rocket science. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherr.
Members of council, seeing no additional speakers on this item, this public hearing is closed. We're in need of a motion.
Move to vote. Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second for denial, and you're voting electronically. Ms. Randolph, are you trying to speak or to vote?
No.
You're, you're hitting the wrong button.
Okay. No.
Everybody wait for a second. Let her reset.
We need to vote. Who's second? You need, who's second?
Thank you. Oh, Lord. Okay, this denial is, this denial is denied by a vote of three, three. We're in need of a motion.
Move to vote.
Are you, well, you don't need a motion. It's denied. But this item will be coming back to you again in two weeks because you all want to hear items for a second time, even if you deny them. Okay. Three, three. Okay, yeah, that takes a minute. Item B, G H P oh six oh two A, our first speaker, Ms. Ann Bowlin. Did you want to speak her second time? No? Mr. Tony Goodwin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager and City Attorney. Again, my name is Tony Goodwin and reside in the Parkview section of the city. I'd also like to say that I am a commercial real estate agent, and, and I have chosen to, to make my livelihood by promoting this Old Town Downtown area. And just to clear up some of the numbers on vacancies along High Street, specifically on the first floor, we'll start in the 200 block, we'll start in the 100 block. Ms. Elizabeth Simmons's former space is now vacant, and of course, has been going through some challenges to be re- reoccupied by a few tenants, but not been successful based upon the fact that they do not want a food tenant downstairs. And that's the condo association's choice. Second block, completely fully occupied along High Street. Third block, to the north side, with the exception of the Oxford Place condos and its first-floor space. Unfortunately, another, another situation to where the bill, the owner could not afford to build out the first floor, which it makes it very difficult to build out a vacant shell that doesn't have walls nor a bathroom. So, that's a very big problem there. The third block of, of High Street to the south, you have 309 High Street, which has just been formally picked up by a church, which was approved by the body. And then, at the same time, to go into that space, also the 325 High Street, which, Mayor, you had just had the opportunity to do a ribbon-cutting on, that I was successful in finding a couple to open up a shoe store. Right directly beside it is 327 High Street, which is also the former Cooper Jewelers and is going to be occupied in the spring. Three, there's two, two more building, two more commercial storefronts in the 300 block and the new Kern Building that are in line, and in the corner, which we are presently under negotiation with right now, with a lease from the national tenant at a rate of eighteen dollars per square foot. Going into the 400 block, completely occupied. Going into the 500 block, at the same time, completely occupied, but does have two, three, two large churches and also a commercial or, excuse me, residential component, which creates a little bit of a, of a hesitance from people walking the street because there's no activity, no activity coming in and out storefronts along that block. Heading to the 600 block, which now the 600 block has a vacancy of two. That being 607 High Street, which was the former Next Consignment Shop, and also 623 High Street, which was the former Cheshire Grill. And I've been working tirelessly to get those two occupied as well. The, the corner store, which used to be leased by the city as the behavioral healthcare or the parole office, has now been recently purchased by a local attorney to make his home headquarters there on that corner. So, I'd say that the 28 vacant storefronts in those six blocks, and let's, let's talk about the 700 block, Gosport Tavern, preparing to reopen by another restaurateur that also has another restaurant in High, on High Street. So, leaving only two vacancies on the north side of the 700 block. Jump across High Street in the 800 block, and we do have some more vacancies. But based upon the fact that we have actually, as a, as a personal property owner in the 800 block, have been told numerous times by banks that we're so disconnected, when the 700 block was completely vacant for a short period of time, that we were so disconnected from the activity, they couldn't see loaning us money on that. So, I just question, if we create a void or create a lack, lack of continuity of a business district, what would it do to the businesses or the possible businesses in the 800 block of High Street? A little story on the Bloomberg Building, which is the 700 block, the corner back behind it to, to King Street and also to the side one way, is, is that was a department store up until about 1975, '76, closed, and then, of course, reopened shortly thereafter as Allen Furniture Store, which operated until 1996, closed again, purchased by PRHA, set vacant for approximately four years until it was sold and also offered by PRHA's choosing to accompany with, which ultimately named it High Street Galleries, a furniture store. Ironically, the two businesses that survived or were operating in that space were large-ticket item businesses, meaning that they didn't require a lot of parking, and at the same time, too, nor did they have a lot of so-called foot traffic to fill their space. But at the same time, at least they had the doors open. That, of course, that late, last venture of High Street Galleries failed for other reasons. Out of, out of the control of, of PRHA, they took the property back and then solicited out for bid to the present owners, who obviously had a chance. And that all happened within the past six years, not 10. So, we do have a little bit of discrepancies on those numbers.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item G H P oh six oh two A. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item G H P oh six oh two A. Members of council, this public hearing is closed.
We've got a motion. Is there a second? Okay. Ms. Randolph, second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted four to two. Item C, H oh eight oh one A, our first speaker, Ms. Bowlin, do you want to speak again? No? Okay. Mr. Tony Goodwin?
Again, Tony Goodwin, and reside in the Parkview District, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, City Council members and City Attorney and City Manager. To the, going back to the historic district guidelines, or at least the historic district and its register, one of the things when it comes to an historic district is that it has to be protected. If it's not protected, it's almost like you, if you don't use it, you lose it. And unfortunately, there's a lot of people that, that own property, building owners, shop owners, that take advantage of the benefits that that historic district offers. And any future investors would also have that same right, as long as that historic district is in place. One of those items that PRHA even offers, only inside an historic district, is a facade loan program, which is a facade loan program of a low-interest loan given to a business or pri, business or building owner for, for an amount of anywhere between five to fifty thousand dollars to do improvements to the exterior of that property. And if it is not an historic district, it would not be qualified. So, my, my, my thought to you is back, going back to the historic district and its, as it's rated or registered with the National Historic Registry, is that it's focused on commerce. High and Effingham is a very high-traffic, high-volume commerce corner. And that being, maintaining that corner, specifically 739 High Street, is important to protecting not only that building, but other investors' properties. Again, noting to the fact that if you lose that, you start basically punching holes into that historic district, then you lose the opportunity for future developers. Even if it's a, even if it's a temporary fix, open up a couple of shops and, or put a couple of spaces in there that you can convert later, you still would have the potential of losing that National Historic Registry designation. And this has obviously been proven downtown. Historic tax credits specifically for the Governor Dinwiddie, one minor alteration to the building on the first floor of that building would have pretty much wiped him out of all historic tax credits. That was an improvement, what he thought was a good thing. But instead, D H R did not feel that way. And so, they told him he couldn't do that improvement. It was basically building columns in between the storefronts. Instead of having it just as a brick wall and aluminum metal windows and doors, he actually had to come back and say, we're not doing this extra addition, which, of course, would deter or hurt the possibility of historic tax credits. So, again, what I would say is that all of our, all of our consultants from years past, going back as far back as 20 years, have said, focus on the downstairs or the first floors of these buildings to commercial, retail slash office use, and maintain that. But you've been telling property owners for years in that, in that pa, in the past, to maintain that same, give them that same marching orders. But now, to come back and say, hmm, no, we've changed our mind. We're going to draw the line in the sand at Green Street, which gives us in the, beyond Effingham Street, any possibility of doing the right thing, and that is simply doing what we, what we all set out to do through either U D, U D A, U L I, Vision 2005, Vision 2025, Destination Portsmouth, and also here just recently, the Economic Development Department stating that we are here to create vibrancy in our commercial district and in our commercial corridor. And that's High Street, all the way to the, all the way to the 800 block of High Street. In closing, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak about this situation. Again, we're, the Old Town Business Association would enjoy to have some dialogue with VHDA, and we haven't had that dialogue, specifically on how we can skin this cap. In, in other occasions, the Planning Department, or, excuse me, the Planning Commission has requested that the applicants go before the civic leagues. That wasn't done in this case when it came to the OTBA. So, I would have questioned at least to have the opportunity to sit down and discuss the possibility of how they could achieve their need to getting those 100 units that they think is the best way to handle this, but also to have the opportunity to keep the High Street corridor vibrant as a commercial district. I thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Mr. Sherr?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, you know, that, that meeting with the civic leagues is something that, you know, we did 12 years ago when I was some, first joined the Planning Commission. And I think that still needs to happen, because we want to, whatever happens there, we want to make sure everybody understands the line of commi, communications are clear. So, Ms. Bowlin, you opposed to meeting with the, with the Old Town League? Okay. So, can you go, can you all get together and have the meeting before our next meeting? So, at least, so at least, so at least you, you all would know from, from whence each other are coming when we meet again?
Okay. Thank you.
That's all I want to do, man.
Are we meeting with the civic league or the Old Town Business Association?
Old Town Business Association and, and Ms. Bowlin.
Okay.
Because those, those are the people who, 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 depending on who you listen to, livelihood could be affected by whatever happens there. So, I, I think they deserve an audience.
Understand. Very good. Mr. Whitehurst?
Mayor, history is an important asset for the city of Portsmouth. Not too many years ago, maybe 25 or 30 years ago, you could buy downtown for a dime. It was really, really, really bad. People came in, invested their money. Some of these roofs cost 25,000 dollars, and people did that. Make, these are private drawings. Same thing happens with our business district. We have a code that says what the business district should be like, and now we're talking about changing it. They put their money up in the business district, put their money in residential, and we, now we have a test. Are we going to change, or are we going to try to keep downtown a historic district? I said we keep it as a historic district, but we need to help the businesses, I'm pushing it again, the Visitors Bureau, get people to come in here and visit, become a destination as we were at one time.
Thank you, sir. Some motion? We're done here?
Move to now.
Members of council, you had a motion for denial, and it has been denied by a vote of two to four.
So, it's approved?
So, it's approved.
Thank you.
No. This doesn't-
Okay. And we will have this item in our next meeting in two weeks.
Correct. Yes.
And we will have, make sure we get that meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We're good.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Whitehurst's.
Oh. Yes, sir. Mr. Whitehurst. Thank you, sir. All right. Madam Clerk?
Okay. Item D, U P twelve dash ten, Brighton, Keisha Mason requests a use permit to operate a halfway house, also called a residential reentry center, to be known as Gwen's House at 1310 Century Avenue. A property known, excuse me, owned by Christian Mall. The property is zoned U R Urban Residential. The comprehensive plan recommends single-family residential high-density development. Vision principle, change in new direction. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, my name is John Hartley, Planning Administrator in the City Planning Department. This item is a request of Ms. Keisha Mason for a use permit to operate a residential reentry center or halfway house to be called Gwen's House at 1310 Center Avenue in the Brighton neighborhood. The map on the right shows the site outlined in red, which is zoned U R Urban Residential, as is much of the surrounding neighborhood. The U R district allows single-family residential uses and some institutional uses by right, but requires use permits for things like halfway houses, multifamily residential uses, and, and similar uses that require a little more scrutiny. The picture on the left shows the house proposed, proposed to be Gwen's House. This aerial photo shows the property highlighted in yellow, in yellow. A slightly different perspective is this aerial photo where, where the property is also highlighted in yellow. It shows that there are essentially two churches, one at each end of the block on the, on opposite sides of the street. The entire neighborhood is designated in the comprehensive plan as single-family high-density, where housing for persons with special needs is encouraged. Also encouraged are neighborhood conservation strategies for protection from incompatible uses, which is why this use requires a, a use permit. This is a picture of the church to the east of the property, on the same side of the property, and the lower photo is- and the lower photo is the residential neighborhood looking on east. Again, predominantly single-family residential. These are photos looking to the west on either side, and again, it's a predominantly single-family residential area. Gwen's House is proposed for fathers released from prison to help them transition and reintegrate into the lives of their children, families, and communities. The existing house that's proposed for this use contains approximately 1,600, little over 1,600 square feet, with five bedrooms and two baths. The applicant originally requested to have 20 residents, but has changed that to no more than 10 residents, not including employees. A trained employee of the operator will also be on-site 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Room and board will be provided while helping to teach basic skills and activities of daily living, such as discipline, responsibility, home budgeting, and, and sharing. Each resident will have a custom-tailored life plan or a list of goals, and will be required to attend training sessions. Residents will be, residents will be regularly counted, and random drug testing will be conducted. Residents will only be allowed to leave the facility for medical assistance, looking for jobs, or for actual employment, and will be closely monitored according to the applicant. Specifically excluded for potential residents are sex offenders, child offenders, violent offenders, mental health patients, and anyone dependent on medication to function day-to-day. On the screen is a floor plan that was submitted by the applicant, and it's also in your packet. According to the applicant, there are five bedrooms and two bathrooms. One bathroom is accessible to all of the bedrooms, however, the other bathroom requires you to go through one of the, one of the bedrooms. You have a definition of a halfway house in your ordinance, and I won't, won't read that right now. There are, there is one standard, however, that does apply specifically to halfway houses, and that is that it must be at least half a mile from any other halfway house, and this proposal does meet that requirement. There are two key ordinance requirements that apply to this proposal. First, it is the off-street parking. There are five off-street parking spaces required for this use. On-site parking presently would allow for two stacked spaces in the existing driveway, which is to the, to the left of the residence on the photo, and the, you can see the, the driveway on the left side of the photos. When considering the institutional nature of the use, with deliveries, staff, trainers, and family accessing the property, staff finds that the traffic associated with this use would exceed the levels of traffic associated with a typical single-family residence. The second issue is, is that of buffer yards. The minimum buffer that would be required is a five, five-foot landscape buffer with a five-foot solid brick wall, or a 10-foot landscape buffer. Without the appropriate buffer, staff finds the proposed use may adversely impact the surrounding residences. Neither of these standards are met as currently proposed. The staff has evaluated the proposed halfway house with the criteria for use permits contained in the zoning ordinance, as is described in your staff report. Based on this evaluation, staff finds that the proposed use does not comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, specifically the parking and buffering requirements, or the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. In addition, given the size of the structure in the lot, the facilities are inadequate to accommodate the intensity of use proposed, and would be incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. At the Planning Commission meeting on September 4th, 2012, there was considerable public opposition to this request, as was reflected in your minutes that you received with, with this application. Based on this op, opposition, the staff's analysis of the request and the staff's recommendation of denial, the Planning Commission recommended denial of this request by a vote of five to one. There is in your packet, however, a list of conditions, which, if you wish to consider approving this, you could use as a, as a rule of thumb, or as conditions to address the various critical characteristics and limitations that, that you might want to impose on a use like this. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Okay. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 12 dash 10. At this time, if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 12 10. Members of council, this public hearing is closed.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second for denial. She's, she's changing the motion.
She's changing.
Go ahead. You're voting electronically. This item is denied 6-0. Item E, UP 12 dash 14, Midtown. James K. Jolly, agent for Jobs Venture LLC, requests a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment with the lounge and live entertainment at 611 Airline Boulevard. The site also includes 601 Airline Boulevard, and 1412 and 1414 Hamilton Avenue. The future land use map in the comprehensive plan recommends commercial development. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers.
Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, members of city council, good evening. My name is Fred Brusso. The application before you is a request for a use permit to add an entertainment establishment to an exist, existing restaurant known as Mario's Fine Italian Foods. As you can see on the graphic on the right, the digital zoning map shows the site to be zoned GMU, general mixed use. The applicant proposes to add an entertainment component, including karaoke, DJs' bands, and acoustical entertainment, along with the current service of food and alcoholic beverages to the existing restaurant. The graphic on the left is an aerial of the existing restaurant with the subject property outlined in black. This slide shows a site plan of the restaurant development. As you can see, it contains a number of parking places to the rear of the building. This drawing has been modified to call out the off-site shared parking, the overflow parking, and the location of the three tree islands to be installed by the applicant to bring the property in more conformance with the code. This slide shows, on the left, the Airline Boulevard frontage that contains an entrance door to the establishment. And on the, excuse me, on the right, the rear of the establishment that includes the second means of egress into the building. This rear door is used by a majority of the establishment's patrons as the primary entrance. As described in the staff report and shown on this slide, there already exists a landscape buffer along the east property line that provides protection from the lights of vehicles in the parking lot to the residential properties across Hamilton Avenue. While this landscaping area is on the right-of-way of Hamilton Avenue, the applicant is willing to enter into an agreement to maintain this landscaping, as other applicants in the past have done. The slide shows the single-family residential development to the east of the proposed site, and the industrial development to the south. The three pictures on this slide show the various types of commercial development to the west across the Airline Boulevard from the site. For the reasons presented in the presentation in the staff report, the Planning Commission at its October 2nd, 2012, public hearing finds the requirements of the zoning ordinance for an entertainment establishment in a GMU district are being met, and recommends approval of the use permit with the conditions contained in the staff report, including the different hours of operation for the restaurant and the entertainment. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Let me ask, maybe Kenny can answer this, but have we had any interface with the Mount Hermon Civic League to make sure that they understood what you're trying to do here, and any objection on their part?
Yes, sir. Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor, Council. I spoke with Mr. Harold, and he voiced no opposition. I invited him to the meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 12 dash 14. At this time, if there is anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 12 dash 14. Members of council, this public hearing is closed.
Move adoption?
Here we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically. This item is adopted, approved 6-0, excuse me. Item F, UP 12 dash 15, Williams Court Activity Center. Sabrina Davis of Rumors Bar and Lounge requests a use permit to operate an entertainment establishment with live entertainment at 4644 George Washington Highway. The future land use map in the comprehensive plan recommends a mixed-use corridor, and is located in the Williams Court Activity Center. Vision principle, a robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call.
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, my name is John Hartley, Planning Administrator with the City Planning Department. Sabrina Davis, owner of Rumors Bar and Lounge, is requesting an entertainment use permit at 4520 Washington, George Washington Highway. Located in the Williams Court Shopping Center with, with Ollies and Dollar General, Rumors is located in the northern portion of the property where the stars, red star is shown on, on the slide, and it's the portion closest to George Washington Highway. This is a photo of the northern portion of the shop, shopping center where Rumors is located. It's, again, to the furthest right of, of that shopping center. At the rear, this is a photo at the rear, and it's particularly relevant because the adjoining property is the Afton Green site, the former Craddock High School site that's now being proposed for development. Across the street is the Craddock, Craddock Community, and you have a number of businesses along, along George Washington Highway, which are shown in this photo. And just to give you some idea, the entrance, this is a photo of the landscaping at the entrance of, of Williams Court II Shopping Center. Rumors contains approximately 2,500 square feet, and currently provides a full menu, billiards, and a jukebox. They are now requesting an entertainment use permit to allow live entertainment, dancing, karaoke, live DJ, live DJ music with a concentration on jazz and rhythm and blues. Rumors currently seats up to 100 people, and operates Sunday through Thursday from 11 to mid, 11 a.m. to midnight, and Friday and Saturday from 11 a.m. to 2 a.m. They're requesting the use permit to allow entertainment during their regular operating hours, and propose to provide security during the hours of 7 p.m. and closing. The property is occupied by Williams Court II Shopping Center, which contains about 10 acres, with over 90,000 square feet of retail, commercial space. It was developed in 1988, and includes a large parking lot with some landscaped areas at each end of the parking aisle, except where there are handicap spaces. An entertainment use permit was approved in 2001 for Three Cheers, also located in the same shopping center. The GMU mixed-use district permits a wide range of residential, institutional, and commercial uses. Since the site was developed in 1988, there are a number of non-conforming site aspects in relationship to the development standards contained in the 2010 zoning ordinance. These non-conforming site aspects would normally only be addressed when investment in the building exceeds 25% of the assessed value of the structure, unless additional improvements are required as a condition of the entertainment use permit being requested. In this case, the owner has agreed to install first a wooden fence at the, and landscaping at the rear of the units adjacent to Rumors. This is to serve as a buffer between this property and the Afton Green development that's now proposed. The owner has also agreed to plant the remaining of 2,500 square feet, which is a rule of thumb that we've used for these situations, along the eastern edge of the parking lot closest to George Washington Highway, so that'll help enhance that, that end of the shopping center. The Planning Commission at their meeting on October 2nd modified the conditions to reflect that additional screening for Afton Green. They also did modify the hours where entertainment uses could occur, to limit it to no later than midnight on, on any given night, but also allowed the restaurant to remain open until 2, 2 a.m. With these changes, the Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of 6, 6 to 0. That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'll attempt to answer them.
Mr. Whitehurst?
One serious flaw, I'm going to support the motion. You misspelled the word Craddock. You don't want to misspell, misspell Craddock, Shuffington, and Norcom. You misspell Craddock.
I apologize for that.
Don't let it happen again.
I always want to put two D's in there, and I'm always, I'm always trying to catch myself.
Mr. Scherer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you expound on the buffer, because we're about to try to build a couple hundred houses right next door to this. Can you expound on the buffer to assure me and, and everyone else? And my other thing, question is, have you, what kind of communication have you had with the developer about this, this proposal?
The, the, the engineer for the developer was actually at the Planning Commission meeting, and we talked about it following the meeting. From the edge of pavement to the property line, there is about three feet. And there are a number of existing trees there. There is currently an old barbed wire fence that runs down along that, that property line. What Mr. Birdsong, who owns, owns the property, has, has agreed to do is to install a wooden fence along the back of this property to extend, we talked about from one light pole to, to the second light pole in, which would cover more than the back of the Rumors establishment, okay? And to install wherever there was space, some bushes. Normally, we would require a 10-foot buffer, but currently, there are utilities, power, and drainage with, just inside the curb of that, of that back parking lot. So it'd be a major expense to even try to make those kinds of improvements. At the Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Bodnar, who is, who's Afton Green's engineer, felt that a wooden fence was, was about all that you could really fit in there to provide screening. So I don't know if I've answered your questions directly, but...
You, you have. You probably could fit a vulnerable one in there, too. There's not that much, not that much difference in the thickness. Because a wooden one, you know, is, unless it's maintained or treated, it's going, it's going, it's going to rot. Somebody's going to kick, going to kick the boards out after they've had one too many there. And I'm just concerned about them walking over to what I hope to be our brand-new, beautiful neighborhood here, here shortly. So I'm good with the fence, with a fence going there, but just, just ask them if they'll upgrade it, or, or at least make it, at least make it the double, you know, the double-sided fence, and not have, have it that where, you know, the, for lack of a better term, the good-looking side is facing, facing the restaurant, and, and the ugly side is facing, facing the, the new houses. If, if they do the double-sided one, it'll, it'll look good on both sides, and it'd be a lot more sturdy, and a lot less enticing to someone who, to try to, to try to, you know, kick in. sturdy and a lot less enticing to someone to try to kick in.
Our ordinance now requires that the good side face out.
Okay.
So it would have to face Afton Green.
Great. That's good.
Can you go to a planned view and show me just how close the potential homes that we're trying to market and Craddock are going to be to that?
There is an alley that goes essentially almost along the property line where the green is...
You got a laser?
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Let me see if this laser works. Where we're talking about, Mr. Mayor, is in this area right here. And there is an alley that runs back in along this tree line. A number of these trees will actually be cut down by the developer of Afton Green. There's a much thicker stand of woods there than, and it kind of straddles both lines. I don't remember the exact distance from those homes.
And we have no objections from the Civic League?
No.
Okay. All right, Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. How many poetry readings were they going to conduct at this establishment? I'm just kidding. Always have a flashback when we have these things. On a serious note, has the developer weighed in on this?
Only through his engineer at the Planning Commission.
And weighed in with concern?
With concern. Again, Mr. Bodnar, who's their engineer, felt that after the Planning Commission meeting that the fence that would be installed was about all that could be done practically to provide the buffer.
Was he satisfied with that? Probably not.
I'm not sure I'm qualified to judge satisfaction.
But we have another similar establishment, Three Cheers, is pretty much the same type of operation in the same shopping center.
Correct. And we actually have received another application in the shopping center for the space next to Ollie's for a banquet hall.
Oh, boy.
So, and that will be before you in January.
Okay. You know, I've noticed on the application, and maybe I've missed it, or maybe it wasn't on this one, and I haven't seen it on the previous ones, and that's the projected tax revenue. That's always, and we have been having those on the applications, but I haven't noticed it in the last couple of meetings, and I think that's always good for us to know, you know, when we make these decisions, what is it going to contribute to our tax base. Obviously, we know this type of operation's not going to be like a grocery store or something like that, but that's good information to know. If we can, there's consensus with my colleagues to get back to sharing that with us on the application, I think that would be good. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd really like to see, along those same lines, Mr. Moody, that the layout of the homes going there, my only concern is trying to market and sell those homes in an environment that probably is not conducive for that, and are we going to be hurting ourselves with this future development with allowing this? And that's my concern, and that was the reason why I asked you for the layout there.
Yeah, because you can drive right through there. I mean, I happen to ride with someone in the audience right through there. You can just drive right across from the lot, right across into there. So that was my concern, that the fence or some kind of barrier need to go there that would keep one side separated from the other, because you've got total retail next to what we hope to be a jewel, you know, maybe our next Homorama site. Who knows?
And the homes are what, 150, 160 we're looking at putting out in that area?
I think 170, 165.
Does somebody come and buy that house next to the ball?
Well, I don't know. I don't think I would, but...
I don't know.
But I'm sure something...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP 12-15. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak but did not have an opportunity to register, please come forward, give your name and address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak on item UP 12-15. Members of council, this public hearing is closed. Mayor, we have a motion and a second for adoption, and you're voting electronically. This item is approved six-zero. City Managers' Report, 12-440. Adoption of an ordinance to amend Section 12-21B and Appendix A of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, to increase assessments in criminal and traffic cases and certain civil matters in the Circuit and District Courts. Vision principle: Efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you will be voting electronically.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Can a member of staff share with the public what this involves, this increase?
Mr. Godwin.
Certainly, Mr. Moody and members of council. This would be a $3 per case charge. That is, it can be charged on criminal and traffic cases as well as civil actions greater than $500. By Virginia Code, that is a limit per case that a locality can charge, and those funds have to be used for courthouse construction or renovation purposes.
Okay. Thanks.
This item is adopted six-zero. 12-441. Adoption of an ordinance to appropriate the sum of $65,176 in the FY 2012/13 General Fund for the City's share of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Community-Based Correction Plan and Planning Study. Vision principle: Efficient responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have registered speakers. Our first speaker is Sheriff Bill Watson.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. You know, I've been thinking about this. They want the taxpayers of Portsmouth to pay $65,000 for their study. What are you signing up for that? Are we in the business of giving money away? I mean, we paid $192,000 for a City Manager's gift box, and $100,000 for a fire chief. Now we've got $1 million for 911 that they've got to pay back to the state. Where's it going to stop? This is absolutely crazy. Now, there's four cities involved: Norfolk, Portsmouth, Newport News, and Hampton. They want Hampton, Newport News, and Norfolk to pay $7,000 apiece. They want us to pay $65,000. I think it's time for y'all to put your thinking caps on or your common sense caps. I don't see where we owe Hampton Roads Regional Jail anything. Show me one thing that they've done for the City of Portsmouth besides take our money. Now, they just asked for a $15 increase per inmate, which comes to $8,000 a day, what they want increased. Have y'all taken time to tell the taxpayers that if you close this jail, it's going to cost them $14 million a year the first year, $15 million the second year, $16 million the third year, and it peaks at $18 million by 2017? For right now, it peaks. They'll be the only monopoly around here. They can go up on their prices anytime they want to. Once we get rid of our jail, it's gone forever. Under state code, we cannot get it back. So by the time y'all sit there and figure out, oh, God, we screwed up, it's too late. You can't get it back. I have no problem getting rid of that building, because I know somebody wants to build a hotel casino there, and that's what this is all about. That's why y'all trying to push this through at the last minute. What I don't understand, how come this didn't come up before election? It should have come up a couple of weeks ago. So you wait till after the election and bring this up and say, oh, we want the taxpayers to pay $65,000. I guarantee, if you'd have brought up before the election, y'all would be sitting up there right now. Okay? But let's use some common sense. Start with, if you close the jail, first thing y'all going to lose is 23 inmates that work garbage trucks, going to cost you $1.5 million a year. The work centers are going to be closed. We won't be doing any public services for the city. On top of that, I'll lose my one-man traffic division, which brings in about $1.2 million a year in traffic tickets. He writes more traffic tickets by himself than the whole Portsmouth Police Traffic Division combined, and that's not hearsay, that's fact. Y'all ready to throw that money away, too? That's $2.5 million right there. We are in the business of giving money away. It's time for y'all to sit back and think about this. Now, you have to understand, with $14 million a year, we can run my budget and buy a brand-new jail at the same time. So I have no problem getting rid of that building if you want it that bad, but let's keep a jail. And as far as Hampton Roads, let them pay for their own damn survey. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Cherry.
Sheriff Watson. Are you a member of the board?
Yes, sir, and I was not.
You're a voting member of the board?
Yes, sir, and I was not there, and they said it was unanimous vote. I was not there. Somebody's lying.
Okay. I just asked a question in work session, and I was told that it was unanimous vote, and our representatives voted yes, which indicated to me you voted yes.
No, sir, I did not. I'd be the first one to vote no. I voted no on everything else. I was not there. Thank you.
Let me ask you, while you're there, do you have a representative that sits in that board meeting, Sheriff?
He was not there that day.
Okay. Do you actually sit in all of the meetings, or are you a representative?
Not all, either me or Lieutenant Colonel Rucker, he's my alternate. It depends what my schedule's like. Sometimes he'll go, sometimes I go. So far, we've voted...
So neither one of you were there at that meeting?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Moody?
I was going to say, no need to come back, Sheriff. I raised the concern about Portsmouth paying 80% of this and the other members 20%. The reply I got at the public work session was that the reason why they felt we should pay 80% or $65,000 is because the study that we did in 2003, that the regional board paid 100% of the cost, we didn't do anything with it. So that was the rationale for us having to pay 80%.
It's not our problem. It's a regional jail. They already complained about regional transportation. Wait till we go to regional jail, and they're the only game in town. They can go up anytime they want to. Let them pay for their own study if they want it. The taxpayers should be left out of the loop. They're already taxed to death as it is. They can't afford anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Lieutenant Lee Cherry.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. My boss is a hard act to follow, but I'm going to answer if we pass these out. In the work session, it was brought up, my friend Mr. Simons back there had said that they needed this study to be able to determine the prices to hold inmates. I would think it's more important for the city to understand what it's going to cost them than it is for the Hampton Roads Regional Jail to determine what they need to charge us. And to that end, I've prepared several exhibits I'd like for you to look at. Exhibit one, you will note, is a study prepared by the Compensation Board of the State of Virginia for fiscal year 2011. As you look at this, you'll see the operating cost for the Portsmouth City Jail. By the way, they prepare these costs for all jails in the state of Virginia. And you will see of that cost, the city is responsible for 43.64% R. In other words, it costs you $4,451,000 to operate the Portsmouth City Jail. That's what the city pays. Exhibit two is the utility expenses for the civic center. I got in touch with Mr. Bagley through a FOIA request. He was kind enough to send that to me, and that added another $360,000 a year for the utilities to support our jail, the water, electricity, and so forth. That gives you a figure of $4,811,000. So we'll call it $4.8 million. If you look at exhibit three, you'll notice that that is the spreadsheet of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail. Now, here again, in the work session earlier, it was brought up that they would have to do this study so that they would know how much they would be charging us to hold these inmates. I think this is very clear that they project the figures from 2013 through 2017 for holding inmates at that jail, and the Portsmouth inmates. You will also note that we pay a little less in the other cities because it is on Portsmouth property. But please note this, that in 2013, we'll be paying $42.80 per DM per inmate, and in 2017, we'll be paying $60.80. That is an increase, ladies and gentlemen, of 42%. I will add also, when I went back and compared our 2010 figures for the Portsmouth Jail, compared to the 2011 that you have before you, that we didn't have an increase. Pretty remarkable. But yet, they're looking at a 42% increase, $18, over that period of time. Exhibit number four is the actual worksheet that the city fills out for the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, and you will note that at the required rate of 250 persons in that jail, that we will be currently paying $3,905,000 to hold 250 prisoners in that jail, when in fact, your jail is holding two and a half times more than that for a lot less money. If you look at exhibit five, you will see what happens if this is projected. Or in other words, if the mayor's letter that he wrote several months ago where he said, please take everybody you can get, move them over to the jail, and I'll deliver them myself, if that were to come true, based on their worksheet, the city would be paying $11,197,000 to hold prisoners at Hampton Roads Regional Jail. But it only gets worse, because if you look at exhibit six, this is the one that the sheriff referred to, that because of the loss of the ICE inmates, Immigration and Customs Enforcement, because of the loss of the ICE inmates, that they've gone on to say that it will be at least a $15 per DM increase. So I invite you to go back to exhibit five. You take the $11,197, you add that $15, and you're at $14,871 in 2013 if you were to move all of the prisoners over there. Ladies and gentlemen, these are not the sheriff's department figures. These figures are per the Hampton Roads Regional Jail in the state of Virginia. It's very simple then to do the math. Take 4.8 from 14.8, and you can see the difference. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Lieutenant. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Lee. I appreciate it. And you didn't charge us $65,000 for this?
No, sir. I'll do it for half of that, and you can mail the check to my home.
How many inmates do you currently have?
As of midnight last night, there were 424 inmates between the mail work center and the jail downtown. Additionally, there were 247 at the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, for a total of 671 inmates as of midnight last night. And it does fluctuate, you know, day-to-day, depending on who's coming and going and where they're being shipped to. But that's about the average that it goes.
Now, we have to, what, house all the women inmates at the regional? Is that...
Yeah. Currently, the women inmates are housed at a regional, and the idea behind the regional jail, Mr. Moody, was simply to be an overflow. It was never really designed to be a city jail. And as the sheriff had said earlier, once you give up that city jail concept, you lose your work crews, you lose all of the abilities that we have to help the city and save the city bunny, but at the same time, you've got to do the math and say, where are you going to get the $10 million from? Now, if I may, there is an alternative to this. We are talking and looking at people who can build jails, and it's not the $100 million that you've been told. There was a jail built up in Alberta, Virginia, for $55,617. The idea of being able to take the cost savings alone in these years and pay for that facility and not be at the mercy of someone else... and not be at the mercy of someone else to hold your inmates is the way to go. It makes no sense to rent forever. So, we all looking at alternatives, but I come here begging you not to spend that $65,000, when in fact, Mr. Simons, I think in the meeting, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but I think he said that he had maybe six months or a year lead time before he had to absolutely have that study done. And Dave, if I'm wrong, you know, I apologize, but that was my understanding. So I say to you, what is the rush? Why do we have to rush tonight to do it? Give us a couple of weeks, and we'll be able, would hope, to be invited to a work session, Mr. Mayor. Give us a couple of weeks, and we're gonna be able to come back to you with some alternatives other than spending $65,000 of the taxpayers' money for a study you don't need.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Whitehurst?
What I'm hearing sounds like it's the right thing to do, is wait a while and see what we can find out. As I understand, these numbers came from the Compensation Board, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct, yes, sir.
Why then does a regional jail need to have a study?
Well, I don't know, you'd have to ask him that. I look at, they may need a study for capacity and charges. That should not affect us, that should not affect the city of Portsmouth. That's their problem. Our study's right here, and I think it's very clear, and it's done with other people's figures. Mr. Vice Mayor, the other thing I would suggest is, I've talked to several leading citizens in this city that are not connected to the sheriff's department, and they're not connected to Hampton Roads Regional Jail. To have the mayor appoint a blue-ribbon commission to simply sit down and look at the figures, both from the state, the Hampton Roads Regional Jail, and hopefully this alternative, and come back to this council with a plan from an independent, but it doesn't have to cost us money to do that. We've got a lot of bright people in this city, including General Short, and I don't think he'd mind me using his name because I have discussed it with him, that we could go to, that could come up with a panel that can come back to you with your figures. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. And keep in mind, everyone, we are in the process of making a business case and a study to look at all of these options. These are not the only options, but we have, at the threshold of where we wanna take this city, this waterfront downtown development, we will not make a haste decision, but we're not gonna delay and put this off to keep allowing us to come up in these five-minute sessions to have financial meetings. I appreciate this, but this is what we're tasked in the manager to do. And, Mr. Manager, if you would, give us a brief synopsis of what we're looking at and the scenarios that we're looking at, as well as taking care of the time constraint that we have to be able to do this with the Department of Corrections. But please do not, I don't want the message that's been conveyed so far by the sheriff and the lieutenant is that we're rushing to do something that's inappropriate. Sir?
You looking at my response now? Yes, sir. The reason for the timing of this issue has to do with the biennial cycle that the Virginia Department of Corrections receives community-based corrections plans.
Speaking to your mic.
And, it should be on. And those, you know, the next deadline for submitting a community-based corrections plan is January 1 of 2013. And so that's the reason for the timing and the admittedly short consideration for council to discuss this and to make a decision. However, in order to have a full array of options to consider for whatever relocation decision is made down the road, it is important to be able to do this study to understand whether or not the regional jail can handle the capacity, and also, if, in order to do that, that requires some sort of construction or renovation, which could be done with 50% of the cost being borne by the state, it has to be done with this community-based correction plan in accordance with DOC guidelines. So that's the reason for the timing. Again, if we don't do it, it means that we're not gonna necessarily have that option available to us to consider as we consider relocation options until the next biennial cycle that DOC would receive a community-based corrections plan.
So we're talking a possibility of two years?
That's correct.
Ms. Randall?
I would just like to reiterate it. I know exactly where he's coming from. I happen to have been at the meeting when the information was disseminated. The thing is, I think that, Mr. Brandon, once all of the information is pulled together, I think a presentation should be made so they can see where the ramifications are, and the sheriff's representative was one in the meeting, if I remember correctly. But that information ought to come before the full council. And as soon as you pull that information together, please do so so that everyone will be on the same sheet, reading the same numbers across the board. Thank you, I think it would help us.
Okay, and, Mr. Cherry, was your question answered in the work session? I thought you had a valid question that you asked about the study and how the decision hinged on whether or not we do the study or not. Were you convinced in the answer that you got from the manager?
I got an answer, but it didn't convince me, no.
Okay.
Mr. Moody?
I hear what everyone's saying about the race to meet this deadline, and we can't do it for another two years. The other half of that question would be, can we financially, realistically, build a new jail and tear the present jail down within two years? I don't think so. I don't think it's realistic. I can see planning for it. Everybody probably in the city agrees that something needs to be done with it. I just don't think tonight that we need to, I'm really in sense that this regional board has encumbered Virginia's most fiscally-strapped city with 80% of the cost, when the other members are skating by at $7,000. I don't care who in the heck was present at the meeting. If our, I guess our other member was the city manager, who's no longer here, and I suspect that he voted for it because he wanted to see the sheriff move away. So I think it is politically motivated to a great extent, but we need to get the politics out of it, we need to get the realism and the common sense. Common sense dictates that, based on the $80 million courthouse that we're paying for, we can't afford to do anything with the jail right now. So to spend $65,000 when these other cities, members of the regional board, are gonna pay seven, I'm incensed at that. I'll say, let's wait for two years. I think we'll have another study like the one we paid for, or they paid for in 2003, that's probably sitting on a shelf somewhere with a lot of other studies in this city gathering dust. Thank you, Mayor.
So, let me be straight, you'd be willing to let this downtown waterfront property sit two years?
Mayor, show me a plan. I have not seen a plan to develop that property, to start with. I've heard a lot of rumors, one of them, like the sheriff mentioned, but I have not seen any concrete plan to develop that waterfront property that the jail's sitting on.
All right, Ms. Randall?
I think one of the things that we need to do is make sure we pull all of our facts together, because I had only been to two of the meetings when I ran into that. But the thing is that there was a representative there from the sheriff's department that was also there. Thank you so much, my councilman down there on that end, Mr. Cherry. But the thing is that I happen to have been there at the meeting, and the information came across. But I would like for them to come forward and bring the information forward. But our city manager was there, and he did get the information. So I'm gonna ask, Mr. Brandon, as you pull everything together, to pull it together so that all of it can be disseminated to the council to ensure that we all be reading from the same sheet on the same page, and that would be a good work section item for us. I think we can only react with the information that we have at hand that's given to us. There are no assumptions, and I don't know anyone with a photographic memory who could put it all together. However, I'd like for us to all be on the same sheet of page, paper, reading the same numbers, to ensure that we all are looking at the same facts. So, thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si. I live in the Woodbine Farm section of Cherslin. Principle of Liberty 10. The God-given right to govern is vested in the sovereign authority of the whole people. Researching the duties and responsibility of city council reveal the current city council failed the citizens by neglecting to carry out the tasks and position mandates. Each city council member needs to identify and discuss issues impacting the city, receive and consider citizens' input, make appropriate decisions in a manner which encourages full and open discussion, and exercise all the powers that the state laws and city ordinance allows, such as, one, regularly and thoroughly preparing for each city council meeting, reading, reviewing, and researching agenda materials to understand what is proposed for discussion, becoming familiar with the city's comprehensive plan, the statutory form of government, the budget, the capital improvement plan, and all the documents impacting the city's policies, conducting site visits, soliciting and receiving input from affected parties and the general public, discussing issues, requesting additional data, and considering various perspectives and proposals from all other council members and citizens. Actively listen to ensure a complete appreciation of each proposal and the respective positions of the petitioner, the affected businesses, the residents, and the city staff. Respond to constituent requests for information and assist them with problem-solving. Act as a liaison between the city and the general public. Two, participation in special study subcommittees to provide information for council's consideration. Assuming responsibility for accomplishing necessary research, either by talking to appropriate individuals or requesting staff to undertake appropriate research. Assuming a constructive and active role in the output of the subcommittees. Three, appoint the city manager and the city attorney and evaluate their performance annually. Four, establish and modify goals and objectives for the city. Setting administrative policies for city officers and employees, defining their powers, function, and duties, fixing their compensation, establishing their working conditions, maintaining their retirement and pension plans, establishing public policy for the city, imposing fines and penalties for violation of city ordinances, approving claims against the city. Five, review and enact an annual budget and impose taxes as authorized by state law. Six, review and approve capital improvement programs for the city, reviewing the long-range plan of the city, formulating and adjusting policies to solve future issues dealing with social and economic trends. Seven, serve as liaisons to created advisory boards and commissions which provide governmental, recreational, educational, cultural, and social services, conducting city business with state and federal agencies, entering into contracts, regulating the acquisition, sale, ownership, and other disposition of real property, participating in civic events by providing leadership, promoting new ideas and new programs to improve the community and its surrounding areas. Eight, enacting and interpreting rules governing its procedures, including public meetings and hearings, encouraging attendance of members at meetings and addressing non-attendance, identifying actual or potential conflicts of interest occurring and abstains from the related votes. A major failure of city council. The council does not incorporate the citizens' voices in the decision-making process of the city. One example, on August 14th, the city council voted to authorize the city manager to proceed with implementation of the downtown master plan and waterfront strategy. The next day, the mayor writes a letter and a resolution tested by the city clerk to the superintendent of the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority. The letter asks the superintendent to do a study and let him know how the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority can take care of our city's jail population. The city manager's job was to implement the master plan. The mayor infringed on the rights of the city manager to do his job. This is called misfeasance. The second violation the mayor committed was his failure to solicit input from the affected parties and the general public about the jail's population. This is called nonfeasance. He failed to consider perspectives and proposals from the other council members and citizens. There was no opportunity for council to make a decision, to initiate research, to compare costs between building the new jail and the cost to send the jail population to Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority. In closing, Principle of Liberty 17. When a system of checks and balances is adopted, it prevents abuse of power.
Thank you, Mayor.
And the mayor needs to resign his position for malfeasance.
Members of council, there are no additional speakers on this item.
Motion approved.
Approved.
Okay, Mr. Cherry? We got a motion and a second, but go ahead, Mr. Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'm not gonna support this item, and just wanted you and the public to know why. You know, I believe in the truth no matter who speaks it, and I wasn't given the whole truth in our work session. Secondly, we talk about the Portsmouth team. We all realize, and I realize, and the sheriff realizes, that we gotta do something with the jail. But it's a decision that the team ought to make. It's a decision that we ought to make with the sheriff at the table. It's something we should do to him, it's something we should do with him. The jail will have to move in order to accommodate the development of the waterfront. But we need to do it in a responsible manner, and make sure the principal, who's gonna have to execute it, is a part of the decision-making process. We would not consider doing something like this without consulting any other constitutional officer that was gonna affect their office in a way this is gonna affect the sheriff's department. So, while I agree we have to do something with the jail sooner rather than later, we have to do it with the sheriff's or his representatives at the table. And Mr. Cherry's suggestion that we have a session and talk about it together is a very good suggestion, and we need to do that. Thank you.
And the sheriff has a seat, excuse me. The sheriff has a seat on the regional board, and that's not suffice to you, Mr. Cherry?
No, because the regional board is not gonna pay the bill for our prisoners to go anywhere. We just, this is in Portsmouth, and Portsmouth and the council are gonna make that decision. We do that with him at the table.
All right, very good. Vice Mayor Whitehurst?
On two occasions tonight, the mayor has openly discussed how a person should vote.
Could your mic on, sir?
On two occasions tonight, the mayor has made a statement, I guess toward Marlene and Steve, how to vote, which is not correct. I told him he did it again, I was gonna make mention in public, he's done it twice. That is wrong.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Whitehurst. All right, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically. This motion has been defeated by a vote of 3-3. 12-442, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a lease granting the city of Suffolk permission to use a portion of city-owned property for certain public facilities. Vision principle, efficient, responsive government. Electronic roll call, and I have no registered speakers. I have a motion, do we have a second? Mayor, we have a motion and a second to adopt, you're voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. 12-443, adoption of a resolution confirming the declaration of local emergency for Hurricane Sandy, electronic roll call.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion. Ma'am, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. New Business, 12-444, boards and commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of council, there are no appointments to boards and commissions to discuss tonight.
Thank you. 12-445, items submitted by council members.
Any items? Councilman Cherry.
Yes, ma'am. We did have one appointment, it was Attorney Ron Cordial as an alternate to the CIPSA to represent the city.
Second.
Ma'am, we have a motion and a second. You're going to be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. We're back to the item of items submitted by council members. Are there any items this evening?
Any items?
Okay.
Councilman Moody?
Thank you, ma'am. Wanted to recognize a previous speaker who also happens to be a councilman-elect, Danny Meeks. Danny's still in the audience. There he is. Like to recognize Danny's presence and congratulate him on his election to city council.
Thank you, Ms. Moody. All right, Madam Clerk?
12-446, report on pending items, and there aren't any this evening. 12-447, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Randy Strutton.
Good evening. Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, council. I'm here tonight for two reasons. One is to thank you, Mayor Wright, for this lovely proclamation that was delivered to me on October 22nd at my retirement celebration at Hoffler Creek Wildlife Foundation at our annual meeting. Ashley Morgan, my colleague for the last 13 years, also received a proclamation, and we were both surprised and honored by your recognition of our service to the city. But we were even more pleased to know that you do indeed value what we have built at Hoffler Creek, and that you recognize it as an important asset to the city of Portsmouth and the region. I have to admit, I'm quite proud of our accomplishments, of building a program of activities and a facility that is user-friendly, that is focused on environmental conservation through nature education and outdoor recreation. The successes that we have achieved demanded a huge effort, and often a great deal of personal sacrifice, not just on Ashley's part or my part, but on the part of hundreds of people. People who contributed often back-breaking labor, and people who contributed hundreds of thousands of dollars to our cause over the last 15 years. I liken what we've done there as pushing a boulder up a mountain. It's not easy to push a boulder up a mountain, especially if you're the one holding the boulder. The more people who are behind you, pushing with you, the easier it is. And I've been very fortunate to know that year after year, more and more people were behind me, helping me push that boulder up the mountain. Each year, we moved it a little further up. We started with trails, we added docks and decks, we added a pavilion, a parking lot, we added a building, an identity sign. This year, we added a brand-new oyster pier. Every year, we've had the people behind us pushing that boulder up the mountain. But I also know the law of physics, and I know that if you don't keep pushing, it's going to start sliding backwards. And it's a whole lot easier for a boulder to slide down the hill than it is for people to push it up the hill. Right now, we're in a serious situation. Our foundation has never been in this situation before. It's a time of transition and leadership. With Ashley and me both retiring, we have no staff. We're going to have to hire a new staff. And unfortunately, not many people are like me and Ashley. They have to earn a living on their own. They need a living wage. We have to figure out a way to make that happen, so that all of the work that we have done over the last 15 years is not wiped out when we leave. So, that brings me to my second reason for being here. I'm here to request a meeting between representatives of the city council and representatives of the management staff and representatives of Hoffler Creek Wildlife Foundation, so that before I turn in my keys for the final time at the end of this year, I will know that we have had a meeting, and we have worked together on a plan to save all that we've built at Hoffler Creek. That's what I'd like to hear from you tonight, a commitment to at least meet and to work with us to save what we think is a very special place in our community, where learning comes naturally and wonders never cease. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd be more than happy to meet with you, and I'm sure the manager and his appropriate folks feel the same way, and we'll set that meeting up. Let me thank you for your service and what you've done. You're right, it is hard, pushing a boulder up a hill, and we don't have the people that has the determination that you've had to see this through. We've got sporadic ones, but standing under a boulder is not like volunteering to do things and pushing them on slippery slopes, and it is a tall order, and you deserve a lot of credit for what you've done, ma'am.
Scary thing is, when the boulder starts down the hill, it crushes everything in its path.
It wipes everything out. That's why I'm so critical. Yes, ma'am. Be more than happy to.
Couple of weeks? We'll meet in a couple of weeks?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Whitehurst, you got a comment?
Hoffler Creek is a jewel. It is a jewel. It's almost automatic. We're not doing a lot to help you. We did in the early years sporadically, but we have money we could put into Hoffler Creek. Unfortunately, the budget year ended June 30th. We add 45 days to accrue money that goes back to June 30th. We can't tell you right now how much that is, whether we are behind, going forward, slippery slope, whatever it is. But we know that a year ago, we had $5.2 million surplus. We need to do a better job of managing our money, looking at line items, so we can do things to help you, because you can use $1,000 a lot better than we can. This is one of those things that we can do for tourists, come actually to see a deer, see a muskrat, look at some of the exotic plants you have, and some of the wild plants you have out there. People will come and see those things if we provide the visitors bureau that will go out into Richmond and places like this and bring people here. We have the ingredients, all we have to do is work it. Coming up with Paradise Creek, it's going to be even a larger version of Hoffler Creek.
Smaller.
Oh, smaller.
Lot smaller.
Lot smaller.
Yeah. About a third.
We have it here in Portsmouth. We just market it, put it out there, let people know what we have. They'll come. Get a lot faster than you can trying to do economic development. Economic development, we're trying to get Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A is one of those businesses, when Tower Mall was being shut down, they were actually tearing the mall down, Chick-fil-A was out there selling chicken sandwiches. We are going to have them. We're arguing over whether or not they're going to have a space to stack cars, maybe 25 or 50 cars, or whatever it is. We have at Craddock High School, talking about putting 200 houses, single-family houses out there. It's taken two, almost three years, going on two and a half, three years to do that. We want to get it one of these days, because the guy that's trying to build it, he's not going anywhere. But we need to find a way of getting people on the street to come see the things we have now, and we can help you. We can give you some money to do some things, and we're not doing that. We provide a lot of words, little action. I want to tell you that, because I won't be here, but I will support you, because you're doing the right job. And we need to find, you know, you're a unique person. This is the second time I retired. You gave up once before, we had to bring you back.
Years ago, yeah.
Sure did. We got to find another Randalls to do what you're doing.
Well, we have some very talented people out there. The thing is, we have to pay them. And that's why we need your help.
That's what I'm saying, we have some money to do that. A little bit of money can go a long way for something like you're doing.
Well, I don't want to get into, as the mayor was saying, I mean, this is not a time to discuss the details of finance. That's why I'm asking for a meeting, so that we can sit down and look at the situation.
We have to get a consensus from this body to authorize the mayor to do something. He can't do it on his own.
I understand, and I'm saying, representatives of the council.
She just asked for a meeting, sir.
But I'm still saying, before you go into meeting, we need to know whether or not we're authorizing the mayor to do whatever he's going to do. We need to discuss it as a council first before we...
We want to listen to in the meeting.
You guys work it out, okay? I'm here asking for a meeting, and that's, I hope we get one.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Ms. Randall?
Randy?
Yes.
How good it is we keep meeting, don't we?
Yeah, we do.
I tell you, I am just so proud of the things that you have done to nurture and follow that all the way through. I remember when you got started, and we didn't have the support of anybody, but those few that came together and wanted to make a vision come through, you had the vision, you had the dream, and we had to do the work to make sure we got it done on pennies. But look at the level that you have elevated that to. Everybody knows about Hoffler Creek. That is a legacy. When you left the school division, you had a mission in your mind, and you had a dream. You created that dream, and every child that has been through Portsmouth Public Schools have had an opportunity to go in that area, because the schools made it a part of their curriculum. But it was all because of a vision that came from a lady who loved the wilderness, and it was truly the wilderness back then. I commend you, because what you have created is a legacy that will forever live in the lives of our young people and those that will grow and follow after you. God bless you. I've been out through the cooking, through the weeds and the bugs and everything else. I think some of the others could really learn a whole lot about the natural life in our cities by taking a day out in Hoffler's Creek.
I would love for the city council to come out, take a bus tour. Come see us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You'd be surprised.
Good to Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, City Council, and fellow citizens. Just over one year ago, I stood before you and shared the tragic experience of my daughter being struck by a vehicle on Cedar Lane, about the heroic efforts of the Portsmouth Fire Department who saved her life, and my concerns over the safety issues which still exist on this major avenue of our city. My daughter survived, and she's recovered, but the next victim may not be so fortunate. That night, I mentioned three suggestions that might help prevent such a tragedy in the future. One was to improve the lighting on Cedar Lane, which is grossly inadequate. In certain areas, the lights on Cedar Lane are spaced so far apart that it causes a shadow effect, and that it reduces the range of visibility. In some places, it's less than 10 feet. The speed limit on Cedar Lane is 35 miles an hour. Under optimum conditions, the braking distance of a vehicle going that speed is about 50 feet. Imagine yourself driving down Cedar Lane one dark night, and all of a sudden in front of you, less than 10 feet away is a pedestrian. If you're going 35 miles an hour, you can do the math, a tragedy's occurred before it's even realized. The second suggestion was to install two signs saying caution, watch for pedestrians, or something to that effect on opposite ends of the blind curve where my daughter was struck, and to investigate the possibility of installing sidewalks. Well, here we are, one year later. None of these measures has been accomplished. The dangerous conditions on Cedar Lane still exist, and the potential for tragedy is still there. There's an old saying that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Fortunately, no fatalities have occurred on Cedar Lane this past year, to my knowledge, but it's only a matter of time. In tough economic times, city budgets, like household budgets, can be strained. Upgrading the lights would cost money, it would be expensive. Sidewalks will cause easement problems. I have a hard time understanding why it's so hard to drive two signs into the ground, but as the safety conditions on this street still concern me, I want to offer another solution, the installation of reflector strips on the edges of Cedar Lane. There are many advantages to reflector strips. One, they don't require any electricity. Vehicle headlights provide the illumination. As you can see from your picture, the street will be lit up like an airport runway. Number two, installation is not complicated. They attach straight into the pavement, almost like driving a nail into a piece of wood. Also, they are inexpensive. According to a source at VDOT, one of these reflector strips cost about $28 apiece. Cedar Lane is about 2.32 miles long, and the spacing requirements, if I'm not mistaken, for these reflector strips is about 40 feet apart on a straightaway and 20 feet apart on a curve. That means about 610 reflector strips will be required to line Cedar Lane and make it a safer street. The advantage is twofold. One, the increased lighting. Also, if a vehicle moves too far to the right, the tires striking these strips will make a rumbling noise to alert the driver. Now, what does it cost? I don't know the cost and labor, but a rough estimate on the material cost is about $17,000, less than 1/1,000 of the total city budget. Many times, changes occur from what we call lessons learned. Here are a few from history. It took the sinking of the Titanic and 1,500 killed to require ships to carry enough lifeboats. It took the sinking of the USS Thresher and 129 killed to bring about the Sub-Safe Program. It took the loss of the Space Shuttle Challenger, with seven killed, and a steam line explosion on the USS Iwo Jima, which killed 10 sailors, to bring about a quality assurance program. Portsmouth is home to about 95,000 people. Tonight, I ask this city council, of those 95,000 souls, which senior citizen, which young adult, which high school student, which child has to die before a few simple steps are taken to correct this hazardous condition which exists at this very moment on Cedar Lane? Thank you for your time, and God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor. Good night.
Mr. Mark Adalde Gietrowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow citizens. The city has formulated its legislative packet for the General Assembly and the U.S. Congress, and although I didn't submit any items, I am concerned about some that are in the packet. One that concerns me particularly is the proposal to change our charter again after the bang-up job that occurred a couple of years... the bang-up job that occurred a couple of years ago and created the confusion, to put it politely, about when candidates were to have filed for this year's city council and school board elections. I think the charter has been gone over enough, and before anything goes to the General Assembly again, any proposal should come before the citizens. The charter contains provisions for a referendum on proposed charter changes. That approach was not used the last time, and I think the product that we had as a result of that process showed the deficiency of failing to have a community conversation about alterations to the charter provisions. The excuse that was used for combing through the charter in the fashion that it was undertaken last time was to move our elections to November from May and save the city money that it would have spent if elections had stayed in May. However, the General Assembly had provided all localities the opportunity to move their elections without the necessity of a charter change. So what was really going on? Well, my explanation, and of course, this is my opinion, it's not binding on anybody else, but my explanation is that certain members of council saw an opportunity to feather their own nests, particularly the two longest sitting members of council, who did not want to have to resign their safe seats on council, give up their paychecks so that they could run for the office of mayor, which is what they really sought. So instead, they bit their nails and backed proxies to run for mayor without having to step down from council. The one member of council who had the courage to resign her seat did so with grace, ran, and was defeated. But I admire her for having the courage of her convictions. The two who did not have the courage to do that have, for the last two years, carped and winded, and in the phrasing of another member of council, ankle bit on the person who ran and succeeded. So I don't think we need a change to the charter that allows people without political courage to run for mayor, because it takes courage to be a leader. And unlike the mayor's opponent in this cycle, who suppressed the rights of the citizens to express themselves from this dais, the mayor has withstood blistering personal attacks endlessly throughout this election cycle orchestrated by the people who didn't have the courage to run for council themselves. And I don't think we need to make it any easier for that to happen. If you've outgrown the job you hold, then you should step down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Vice Mayor Whitehurst.
You're so wrong. I think it came from the city attorney looking at...
In your opinion, sir.
You can't talk now. I think the city attorney came to this body and asked us to look at all the ordinances that were obsolete. We agreed with him. We set up a Blue Ribbon Panel. The Blue Ribbon Panel looked at all the laws and regulations and things that's in there that are obsolete. They came up with a recommendation. All we can do is recommend. We can't come up with wording and whatever. It was Senator Louise Lucas that changed the wording. And it all screwed up to protect her friend, Kennedy Wright. That's fine. What I'm saying is, you're wrong, sir. The only thing we did was agree with the city attorney, saying we need to look at all those obsolete laws and regulations. I feel that it's wrong to have the only elected position, I think, in this country. You have to give it your seat to run. I'm off council as of December 31st. I was asked what day that I wanted to serve until, and I said, what day do I have? I chose December 31st. Had no idea that I would not be successful. I ran to win. Sir, you are very opinionated, but you have your opinion, the truth is different. Wanted the citizens to know that we did not orchestrate anything. We were trying to make the records correct. The Blue Ribbon Panel came back with a recommendation that was not bound by anybody but themselves. We submitted that to the General Assembly. Those are the facts.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Moody?
I think I'm the other unnamed source that the speaker is referring to. As my colleague said, the state senator he referred to, even one little bit further, said the citizens of Portsmouth don't want that. Well, to your point, the only way to gauge that would be a referendum. Sir, I've told you on more than one occasion in private conversations that I wasn't interested in running for mayor. If I did, I would run, and I think I would win. But I think I can serve the people better sitting in this seat. As far as basing your speech on your observations, I see you standing out in the hall for the last fourteen years, and you don't come in this room until after the Pledge of Allegiance is said and after the Lord's Prayer is said. So, and I wouldn't read anything into that, and I would never accuse you of doing anything other than being a patriot and a man of God. Now, with that said, you're standing there accusing me and a colleague. He can speak for himself, but I'll speak for myself, okay? And you're totally wrong in what you say. And I have opinions too. You have yours, and everybody else has theirs. I don't give up my opinions because I'm sitting in this chair. And I tell you what, I think it's dead wrong that out of all the elected positions in the United States of America, that a member of council in Hampton Roads, it's not just Portsmouth, it's Hampton Roads, can't run for a mayor's position if they want without sacrificing their seat. Mr. Ryan just ran for the United States Senate and Vice President of the United States. He didn't have to resign. John McCain ran for president four years ago as a U.S. Senator. He didn't have to resign. Delegates run for governor. Senators run for governor. They don't have to resign. So what it is, is your point, sir. What is with the mayor's position, or is it this particular mayor's position? Perhaps you should be the one to come clean on this issue. Good evening. Have a nice night. Always a pleasure to listen to you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As far as I know, the two of us are not twins. My mom and your mom are two different people. I came to admire you two years ago, and I still do. I have found you to be a man of intelligence, a man of integrity, and somebody who speaks from the heart. You're not perfect as a mayor, but of the people who have held the position during my time in Portsmouth, I feel you've done a creditable job, and I don't mind saying so.
Thank you, sir. Good night. Mr. Moody?
I have nothing else to say to the speaker.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, next?
Next speaker, Ms. Christina Carlton.
Put your phone up for that. Atheist, unpatriotic. Ask us, sir, at that.
Mayor Wright and members of council. My name is Christina Carlton, and I stand before you tonight to discuss the conditions within the neighborhood of Craddock. On drainage, lack of proper drainage has made certain roads unusable and living in particular homes uninhabitable during strong storms. Even moderate rainstorms create street backups and flooding concerns for homes. This eventually leads to deterioration of the roads and mold and mildew within the homes. On trash, Section 16 of the city code describes that trash be placed no earlier than the night before pickup. These regulations are not enforced. Drive through the neighborhood on any given day, and you will see accumulations of yard debris, furniture, appliances, garbage, and tires. Some families even feel it's their right to place their garbage on the median instead of the curb. Abandoned homes. Numerous homes, mostly rental properties, are left abandoned or empty when neither the real estate agencies, property maintenance offices, or homeowners being held accountable for these conditions. Warnings, one after the other, are not enough to make these individuals care about the conditions. I'm sorry. Individuals care about the properties of the neighborhoods that are being degraded by the home's conditions. I'd like to suggest that every time a home is cited for the same infraction, that the fine go up by at least 10%. I'd also like to suggest that the companies handling these homes be penalized. Just how long do you let a home's condition go until the notices stapled and pasted to the home simply become a new layer of siding? Empty businesses. The center of Craddock used to be a hub for small businesses and families to gather for daily activities. These days, many of the business spaces are empty or are simply being used for storage. Boarded windows and empty signs are continuous reminder of an economic downward spiral. I believe that the city could be reaching out to the community and surrounding cities to bring in potential business owners, possibly even offer incentives to property owners in searching out for acceptable venues, business ventures. Condemned buildings. Two of the office spaces in the Craddock Center have been empty for over eight years. Both of these properties are missing their roof, exposed to elements from the rear of the building, and have become a hangout for homeless and whinos. These properties are 54 Afton Parkway, owned by Miss Rosetta Mann, and 56 Afton Parkway, owned by Green Tree of Virginia Incorporated. On terms of parks. Cemetery. The large tract of land across from the Craddock Middle School belongs to the heirs of R.C. Barclay. What could it hurt for the city to contact these individuals about caring for the property, such as placing a sign letting residents know it is a cemetery for some of the founding families of Craddock? Or how about turning the land into a park? A dog park. Afton Park is a large patch of land directly behind the Craddock Elementary School. With the growing population of dog owners, this would make a suitable place for exercising family pets in a fenced area. Currently, it is not in use and has no dedicated purpose. As of now, just by the looks of it, nothing suggests that it is a public park. A historic district. When one thinks about a historic district, they envision an area that the community has taken to heart and has the intention of preserving the way life used to be, a place where families take pride in their homes, streets, schools, and businesses. However, if all of the burden of a historic district is placed entirely on the city inspector, many aspects will be overlooked or simply set aside to take care of more pressing matters, such as downtown commerce. I believe that a commission should be established within Portsmouth that handles nothing but the enforcement of homeowners or real estate agencies for the conditions of their properties. They can also act as a liaison between the city and state to procure assistance from the state for economic development and revitalization. With all of that being said, I would like to remind members of council about the Facebook page called "A View of Craddock." It was created for the residents and the city workers of Portsmouth. Interaction between the two is highly recommended to ensure that all issues are resolved and that the good and bad of Craddock are known by all. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carlton. Let me ask you, have you brought these up to your civic league meetings?
Mayor, I know this may be a little hard, but I do not feel that town council is so far removed that I have to go through a civic league in order to bring my concerns up before council.
Okay. That wasn't the purpose of me asking. I just wanted to make sure that the civic leaders in the neighborhood were aware of your concerns.
I had put out flyers. I've gone around through all the homes, putting up the flyers about the website. I have not gone specifically to a civic league meeting. No, I have not.
Okay, thank you. This is horrible, but thank you for putting it in. Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Carlton, the managers agreed to look into these things for you. If you can give some of those addresses to Ms. Hoag and some of the other data, Mr. Garfree is gonna look into, see what he can do to help you out, I don't know. So Ms. Hoag is sitting right there. If you could give her those addresses that we have pictures of, because we don't know where they are. Because I went to the Facebook page, but I couldn't ascertain where they were either. So if you could...
To be clear on that, I tried to leave off addresses so as not to pinpoint directly an owner. It's all about generalities.
Yeah. Okay, but we need to know where these places are, though, so if we can affect some change. So if you can give her those addresses, we appreciate it.
Most certainly.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Ms. Carlton. It's not a civic league problem, it's a city problem. We give permission when stuff like this hap... It doesn't happen all at once. It happens step by step, and it doesn't just happen in Craddock. I had a citizen that lives in the Southampton area, near Hoffler Creek, in fact, probably, I don't know, about three blocks away, on Woodside Drive, sent me some photos, and I couldn't believe it, on what it looked like and what he said was being dumped there. Hazardous waste, fuel oil, concrete. Come to find out, the owner of that vacant lot lives in Chesapeake, and he's using a lot that he purchased for $30,000 in a pretty good community. He's using it as a dump site. Now, all that stuff didn't just get there overnight. He's been dumping it gradually. So, you know, shame on us if we allow stuff like this to happen. We've got laws, in fact, some citizens of, I think it was Parkview, it was a collaboration, got together and got some legislation passed to deal with blighting influences like in these pictures in communities. I don't have that legislation in front of me, but we need to use it and exercise it to the fullest extent to deal with these people. This is awful. The lot in Southampton, and I invite anybody to ride by it on Woodside Drive. It is absolutely horrendous that you find something like that in a well-maintained community. And you're right, Craddock's a historic district, and there's no way this should occur. Thanks for being here.
Get that information with Ms. Hoag, and we'll appreciate you coming. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Cantrell Devon?
She got it right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Lady Randall, the rest of the council. My name is Cantrell Devon. I reside in Newport. I'm the founder, diva. And I'm here tonight to congratulate everyone who ran for a well-run race. Everyone couldn't win, and we knew that. So we say congratulations to the work that you all have given our city, and for the years that you did stand on the wall. We respect that, and we believe you're gonna continue to support the city of Portsmouth with your wisdom and the knowledge that you have for us to move forward, even though everyone is still not on that leadership level. I believe the integrity and the character that's been instilled in you over the years, we can still depend on you as a citizen, I mean, as a city. Secondly, I have to say, I'd like Ned McKay. He was my friend, and he didn't make it. But I really like Ned, so I don't know if they get to run again or not, but I like Ned. So I wanted to say that before I move forward with my questions. So, Mr. Mayor, you know, you're getting rid of the Craddock facility? You know, I always have all these questions. You listening, Brandon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because I wanted to know, you know, you have that facility there, but it has a gem clock on the inside. on the inside? And I believe Clark, S.H. Clark, still has a gym clock in that facility because they have gyms in it, but it's not being used. Well, there's a location that need to have a gym, but they need a gym clock. Could that be donated?
The clock on the wall?
Yes, the time clock.
Okay. We can look into that.
What'd you think, Brandon?
He's writing it down.
Okay, because it's late. I'd have missed my baby's bedtime. So, oh, there's another lady. Everyone has given me her name many times, and they've taken my information to get it to her. So I figured, since I can't locate her personally, that maybe from here, someone would see me requesting to meet with her and get the message to her, so I can then get a meeting with her. And her name is Ms. Carolyn Bell. The CCI, Ms. Randall, you think about, CCI members have told me that I needed to meet with her on several different occasions.
You say Carolyn?
Carolyn Bell.
Carolyn Bell, okay. Yeah, I know where it's from.
Okay, everyone, okay, so we can be moving forward with that information getting back to me. I have to do this the easy way, so your people can contact my people. You remember Ellen said that? Let your people contact my people.
Got it.
So we're going to save time on that, and that's all I have. Mr. Moody, you showed me my-
Oh, this?
Yes.
There you go.
Are we ready tonight? If not, then you keep it a little longer.
Sarge has arms here.
Yes, he's struggling tonight, too. They worked you tonight.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're so kind. I owe you a hug. I'm going to give you a hug, but not tonight. I got to get home to my family. Good night.
Good night, ma'am.
Our next speaker is Chris Cullen.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Staff, and Portsmouth residents. I'll try to keep this quick. I know we all want to go to bed. I just had a couple of questions regarding the overpayment from the state for the 911 call centers. And some of my questions would be, over the period of three years, there's an overpayment of 1.1 million. Have we looked into why the discrepancy is such a large amount from the city and the state's figures? And also, who is responsible on the city's behalf for furnishing those numbers to the state? Have we also verified that the state numbers are correct? And this will also bring me on to my second topic. Where are we in the process with the city auditor? Can I get an update on the progress? Can I get a timeline, or when are we expecting to go into the next further stages? And when we actually plan to have a city auditor onboard? And lastly, yesterday being Veterans Day, and Portsmouth being a Navy and Coast Guard city, I'd like to recognize our members of council that are veterans, Vice Mayor Whitehurst, Councilman Moody, Councilman Cherry, and also Councilman Edmonds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your first question on the overpayment, I think, Mr. Attorney, is there anything we can release in that regard?
That matter is being investigated right now by the grand jury. Once the grand jury completes its work, I have made a request of the Commonwealth's attorney to have any information that may legally be released from the grand jury report released to me. I will review that information upon receipt, determine if there has been any overpayment, that is, whether there is a civil claim that the city can assert for overpayment. I don't know what the evidence will show. But if the evidence does show that there is a claim, that there has been overpayment, I will assert a claim on behalf of the city and try to recover it. But we simply will have to wait for the due process of law to proceed, allow the grand jury to do its work, and see what happens as a result of that.
Thank you.
Okay. And your last question on the auditor, that is in process, and we actually have that position posted now, and it's been posted for about two weeks. And I don't know when the closing date, do we have that? It's a small memory.
The position posted, we will refer to all the applications.
Okay. But yes, that process is in place as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Good night.
Our final speaker is Ms. Pat Simons.
I'll try and be brief also. Pat Simons Mimosa Cove. Just, I would just like a point of clarification on the last speaker's statement. He asked about the 1.1 million that Virginia, the state of Virginia, had overpaid us for that E-911 services or something? And I don't know what that had to do with the grand jury. Is that something the grand jury's looking into? I thought that was different. I thought that had to do with Mr. Horton.
Mr. Attorney, you want to address her?
I don't have anything further to say at this time.
Okay, thank you. You can finish your comment, ma'am.
Thank goodness the elections are over. I just, normally fall is the time where the city manager would start working with his staff to develop budgets for the spring. So I want just to let you know that Portsmouth citizens believe those we have elected to guide the city into the future should be actively involved in that developing process for the budget. And work on next year's budget should be in progress, so now's the time for each of you to take action. And there are a number of commonalities between the lowest-rated cities in our country, like high unemployment, shrinking tax base, economy devastated by the recession, population decreases, weak tax base, high poverty rate, and it goes on and on. Does it sound like Portsmouth? The recession, which officially started in '07, has placed financial restraints on many cities. When revenue declines are not met with the same reduction in spending, they can lead to negative cash flow. Well, Portsmouth has not dealt with revenue declines because of the way that our taxes continued to be raised. In 2001, at a real estate tax rate of $1.36, this city collected $42 million in real estate taxes from the citizens. In 2010, at the lower tax rate of $1.24, this city generated real estate tax revenue of almost $93 million. That was 122% increase, well over $50 million that you took the citizens for in its 10-year period by reducing our tax rate. So we've got to start looking at reducing some spending. And also, other than minor spending decreases in FY09 and '11, you have done nothing but increased the expenditures and debt for our city. In 2001, outstanding debt in this city was $231 million. In 2010, $415 million, almost doubled in 10 years. This is just ridiculous, and it's time that you start looking at where to reduce spending. Now, you need to be giving management some guidance in where to go to start working on this budget for next year. And I'll be happy to give you some, a list of some items, if you would like. Fire and rescue. Portsmouth spends 148% of the state average, $270 for every person in this city on fire and rescue. Now, we, I can understand if you need to be a little bit over the average, but 148% of the state average is a bit much, and somebody needs to look into that, you know? And I think you need to instruct city management where to start looking. Things that could be eliminated, tuition reimbursement. I mean, we are still in a recession, and your citizens, you know, you've taken all our money over here, doubled our taxes in 10 years. We just don't have it anymore, and you need to stop spending it. You need to ask every department to recommend a 15% reduction in spending. Let those department managers figure out where to do that. And basically, consider some level of service reduction in every city department with a lesser impact in public safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. To Ms. Simons' point, every budget year, I always ask, where's the cut in expenses? One major area is a fuel management program. This city, a large, large expenditure is on fuel, to fuel the vehicles, city vehicles. And, you know, if you look at some other cities, there's been substantial savings in idling policies. In other words, instead of going in 7-Eleven, getting a cup of coffee, and, you know, eating a Danish, and leaving your vehicle idling, you cut it off. And there are systems that can manage that type of thing, and the savings can be substantial. Could be to downsize some city vehicles. Whatever it is, we need a fuel management policy, and I think that could substantially reduce costs. But, you know, every dollar, pretty soon, save a dollar here, a dollar there. The old saying goes, it adds up to real money. And I would like to see your list and your suggestions, and suggestions from other citizens as well. Just because you're elected to council doesn't mean you're the sharpest knife in the drawer. So there are a lot of good ideas out there from citizens that can contribute to savings ideas. So, thanks.
Well, thank you, and I'd appreciate it if each one of you realized it's up to you. We put you there. Now, you need to get this management going in the right direction, and you need to take the input we're giving to you and set him straight. Tell him where you want that budget to go. And every budget you look at from now on should include some sort of a tax rate decrease.
Thank you, ma'am. Good night. Madam Clerk? Is that it? All right, we adjourn.